I wanted to sit in the seat this, you swim from Alcatraz to the mainland, you can sit in that chair all night long.
Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to our council meeting, but before we start, I'd like to call Irene Torres forward from the Star of David Ministries for the opening prayer.
If we bow our heads, please. Father, we come to you in the name of Jesus, and we thank you for this night, we thank you for every person in this room, we lift up the agenda items to you from past, present, and future, and we trust, God, that you would have your hand in the mix, we pray for wisdom and strategies for our city, we thank you for all our city officials, our mayor, our safety, our public safety, for police, for fire, for EMS, we thank you, and we lift it all to you, and we thank you that our city will prosper, and that you will be glorified in Jesus's name, amen.
Thank you. Chief, would you lead us in the flag, please?
I would lead us to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'd like to call to order the September 2nd, 2015 meeting of the Los Banos City Council, and Director Maloney, can I have roll call, please?
Freya?
Here.
Lewis.
President.
Silvera.
Here.
Stonegrove.
Here.
Valalta. Here, we do have a quorum. Item number four, consideration of approval of agenda, do I have a motion? Mr. Freya.
I'll move to approve the agenda as submitted.
Mrs. Lewis.
A second.
Motion by Freya, second by Lewis to approve the agenda as stated, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition?
None carried.
Okay, so we have two presentations this evening, first one is a certificate of appreciation for Marco Boffa, would you please come forward?
I haven't seen much of this young man since junior high school, and I just have to tell you, even then, he's now a young adult, and he was just a wonderful student, a wonderful person, and always a helping individual, if I ever needed anything around the junior high school, this, this young man would always be first to, to volunteer, to just help any student, he has a heart of gold, and now, many, many years later, he's continuing, and what he does is invaluable service for many people who just don't have the strength to put out their, their garbage cans or the trash cans, and so, he goes all around town, and he helps by putting out these trash cans for people who are able or aren't able, and if you ask him for help, he'll help you, and I can't thank him enough, and I can't thank his parents, his dad's here tonight, his mom's in Italy right now, and she'll be home tomorrow, and his brother's here, is it Michael?
Yep.
Okay, hiding behind the beard, okay. Anyway, I, I just have to tell you that it is just an honor to, to be alongside Marco, and to again, see you again after all these years, and just to watch you develop into manhood, and such a fine man, so, thank you. So with that, I'd like to present this certificate of appreciation presented to Marco Boffa, in appreciation for your many good deeds throughout the community, I admire your willingness to help others, congratulations, Marco. Thank you so much. Okay. Now, you see this trophy up here, it was between the attorney and the mayor, and the attorney and the mayor did not earn this trophy, maybe the two of us combined together could swim the length of a swimming pool, but, the young man I'm going to introduce now, James, why don't you come on up? Well, he's small, but he's mighty, I'll tell you that right now, come on over here where everybody can see you. Proclamation recognizing James Savage, and the proclamation will say it all, and then I'll talk a little bit about that afterwards, whereas, on August 22nd... Well, let's get the rest, where's, where's everybody else? Fantastic, oh my God, okay, stand right there. On August 22nd, 2015, James Savage, along with 500 athletes, competed in the 35th Annual Alcatraz Escape From the Rock Durathlon, and successfully swam 1.5 miles between Alcatraz Island and the aquatic park in San Francisco, you see any sharks? Okay, good, 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 I'm happy, whereas, James Savage, at eight years of age, was the youngest participant, and placed first in his age division with a time of 57 minutes, 46 seconds, and whereas, James Savage is part of the Los Banos Swimmers head coach, uh, excuse me, head coached by Josh Weinberger, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, who is one of his biggest supporters, and who helped him to prepare for this race by his daily training, attention to detail, and constant encouragement, and whereas, James Savage did not fear the sharks, or the sea life under him, nor the cold water, and believe me, that water's cold, the strong tide, or the distance as the head, as he swam, five times the amount at practice, and whereas, James Savage stood up out of the water, he received the most cheers of all the swimmers, and the many people who were congratulating him, and taking pictures with him in amazement at what he had accomplished at such a young age, now therefore be it proclaimed that the mayor and city council, and members of the city of Los Banos do hereby congratulate James Savage for the extraordinary recognition of placing first place in his age division at the 35th Annual Alcatraz Escape From the Rock, and commend him for his hard work and determination. I have to tell you that if you've ever been to Alcatraz, or you've been to that beach, and you wondered why, after all the years that Alcatraz has been in existence, they think some people escaped, but they're not sure, they never found them, and this young man, at the age of eight years old, placed first in his division out of all the adults that entered, and he lives here in Los Banos, and we are just so proud of him. So with that, James, I'd like to present you with this proclamation that I just read. Okay? Whoa, 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 we're not done yet, we're not done yet, would his family stand up, please? Come on over here. Would you like to introduce your family? No? Well, Mom, why don't you do the introductions, then?
Well, this is, this is James, this is Madeline, and this is Tyler, those are his siblings, his father's at work, couldn't make it. And his amazing swim coach, Josh, is here, again, constant support, constant encouragement.
Josh, why don't you a little train, tell us a little bit about the training routine that you put this young man through in order to get him prepared for this swim?
Honestly, I, I don't, don't know if I do anything special, I, I try to tailor the workouts to the kids and their abilities, James is such an amazing individual, though, he doesn't swim with other eight-year-olds, he tends to swim with 10, 12, 14-year-old children, because he's at that skill level.
Thank you. Well, James, thank you for being a citizen of Los Banos, and you continue, I'm sure we're going to hear great things about you, and, his, his parents have breakfast at Eddie's Cafe every weekend, and when I'm there, he comes up to me, and he shows me like a trophy a week, every new trophy that he wins, and I'm very honored to be your friend, and so please, continue to come up to me and talk to me, okay? All right, James, see you later. Okay. But, two words.
James. That's his trophy.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Okay, let's go on to item six, public forum, members of the public may address the city council members on any item of public interest that is within the jurisdiction of the city council, which includes agenda and non-agenda items, no action will be taken on non-agenda items, and speakers are limited to a five-minute presentation, detailed guidelines are posted on the council chamber informational table, we have some public hearings here tonight on different items, if you came to speak on one of those items, you can either speak now, or you can speak at the, the public hearing, we will have an opportunity to speak on the individual item at that time, so, if there's anyone else who is here to speak on any other item, who would like to approach the podium, please come up now for the public forum.
Good evening, Bertha Freya, Los Banos Chamber of Commerce, we have welcomed several new members to our chamber, Candace Taylor of Century 21 M&amp;M and Associates, Patrick Geary of the Geary Real Estate Group in Taro, Ann McCauley, who offers identity theft protection services, Emmanuel Medical Center, Segoy Rolls and Korean BBQ, and Hook and Ladder Hot Wings, we will welcome Brandy Adams as the new owner of Fast and Affordable Divorces and Legal Document Preparations with a ribbon cutting this Friday at 10:00 a.m., and then on Friday, our Friday, September 11th Mixer will be hosted by the Los Banos VFW, American Legion, and Women's Auxiliary, DeVita Dialysis will host a mixer on Thursday, September 24th, at their G Street facility, the Chamber of Commerce is currently making plans to celebrate a groundbreaking ceremony with Aqua Entertainment Center in the San Luis Shopping Center on Tuesday, September 15th, and then we, and we invite you to join us at 10:00 a.m., our Fall Street Fair is just around the corner, we have vendors, entertainment, and fun for the kids, all in store for Saturday, September 19th, from 8:30 to 3:00 in downtown, we still have room for vendor booths, so if you are interested in participating with your group, or organization, or on your own, please visit us online at losbanos.com, or stop by and see us for an application, we are also getting ready for the Tomato Festival on October 3rd, this free admission event, spotlights our local tomato processors, and will offer live entertainment, games, food, contests, cooking demonstrations, and a salsa competition, the festival will run from 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. at the Spring Fair Grounds, and we have chosen a theme for our annual Chamber Downtown Christmas Parade, and it will be a Sesame Street Christmas, applications will soon be available to participate in the parade, and we're looking forward to possibly having our sponsor, Republic Services, get Eric Limone to dress up as Oscar the Grout.
That'll draw a couple of people, all right.
Mayor, council members, I just briefly wanted to announce to the community, the Knights of Columbus is having their annual soccer challenge for boys and girls ages nine to 14, on Saturday, September 12th, at the Olivera Soccer Park, and it's going to be between 11:30 and 1:30 p.m., we'll have some information at the community center, the Parks and Rec Department has been nice enough in the past to let us do it at the same day they do their soccer clinic, so that there already are, you know, children there that are participating in soccer, and so this is a free event, no entry fee, but we do need to have the parents consent, they can win a prize, and so, we encourage anybody, any boys and girls between nine and 14 to show up on September 12th, between 11:30 and 1:30 at the Olivera Soccer Park to participate, thank you.
And who sponsors this, Ed?
It's the Knights of Columbus.
Knights of Columbus, thank you.
Yeah, and we've been doing, I think this is about the third year now, so, okay.
Thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
Okay.
Sure, Ed Amorel, so, I think everybody knows me, but...
And what city are you from?
Yeah, and I also want to congratulate Marco Boffa, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else who'd like to speak at the public forum?
Eric Limone, resident of Los Banos, employer of Republic Services, good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, city manager and attorney, tonight I have a few things to talk about, Republic Services will be holding the annual fall cleanup event Saturday, September 26th, between the hours of 7:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. in the Merced County Spring Fair parking lot at the corner of Fourth and F Streets, Los Banos residents, please don't miss your chance to bring all your unwanted items you can't place in your regular garbage or green waste carts for free disposal, green waste must be separated from other materials, car tires will be accepted, rims must be removed from tires, nine tires maximum, any more than nine tires, the state of California requires a tire hauler permit, car and truck batteries will be accepted, electronics such as TVs, computers, computer parts, DVD, VCR players, and cell phones will be accepted, please note, household hazardous wastes such as paint, chemicals, household batteries, medical waste will not be accepted at this event, no exceptions, Oasis Thrift Store will be there collecting unwanted clothing and other charitable donations, there will be someone on hand to provide you a tax deductible receipt, for information, for more information, please contact us at 826-0231, or visit us at 409 Mercy Springs Road, I had to change this up a little bit to accommodate a friend back there, I also want to remind residents that trash service will be delayed next week for Labor Day, Monday, September 7th, if your service is on Monday, trash pickup will be on Tuesday, Tuesday on Wednesday, Wednesday on Thursday, Thursday on Friday, and Friday on Saturday, please remember to place your trash and recycle and green waste carts after your collection behind closed gates, not visible to public view, no later than 11:50, 11:50 p.m. on your service date, this must be in accordance to our city's municipal code, one more thing, I wanted to talk about us sponsoring the annual Merced County and Los Banos Parks and Recreation Movie Night on Saturday, September 12th at 8:45 p.m. at the Henry Miller Plaza, between Fifth and Sixth Streets, the movie, the movie night will commence after the fire department's event, at the request of our fire chief, we will be showing airplanes, fire and rescue, prior to the movie, I will be asking recycled questions for our youth, and educating them on the importance of recycling for a better tomorrow, it is recommended that you arrive at least a half an hour early, and make sure you bring a blanket and a chair, and if Chief Marison is around, I'd like him to elaborate, oh, you're right behind me, you suck off on me.
I just wanted to take a minute to personally thank Eric and Republic for teaming up with us on this event, we're covering a lot of different things September 12th, and the focus, the key thing is to promote volunteerism for a number of programs that we have within Los Banos, and also, aware, our cancer awareness program that the Firefighter Association sponsors, and I just want to give you a heads up, is that our t-shirts are in, these changed up the design this year a little bit, to where you have the Pink Heels logo on the front, sponsored by Los Banos Firefighters Association, and the logo on the back, and these will be available for pickup starting Tuesday of next week, we're taking pre-orders now, but starting Tuesday, you can come down to the fire station and purchase them, or pick them up if you've already ordered them, and we're going to be selling these at the event on the 12th, the event on the 12th is turning out to be a pretty significant event, we've got Los Banos Fire that's there that's going to be promoting volunteerism as far as volunteer firefighters, we're going to be handing out hot dogs, popcorn, got all the proper permits to do all that, Police Department's going to be there to move forward with their vital program, and talk about careers in law enforcement, fishing games there for law enforcement, State Parks is going to be there with their big boats, there's a lot of different volunteer organizations, if people aren't sure what they can do, well, we'll have something for anybody that feels that they have time to volunteer, so, there's a lot rolled into this event, we encourage everybody in the, the city's participation, thank you, and thank you, Eric. Tim, the cost, Chief, the cost of the shirts? $15 apiece. $15 for the shirts? Yeah. Okay, and they can, and they can obtain a shirt at fire station number one? Yep, or we'll have them, we've got 400 of these on hand that we're going to sell up until the event, take orders at the event if we run out, and we'll continue to take orders up until the 18th, we have to cut it off on the 18th because, to have them made before October starts, because October is cancer awareness, and the fire department and the city employees that are going to participate will be wearing their t-shirts anywhere between the 4th and the 10th, we'll wears our, wear ours all week then. Okay, thank you. You're welcome. Thank you, and, and Eric, the waste collection date again is? September 26th, 7:00 a.m.
An hour.
Did I say that? An hour, hours? Oh, 7:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Seven to, to two? Yep. Okay. At some point, we have to talk to the, the other group about a hazardous waste collection too, okay? All right, is there anyone else who'd like to speak at the public forum?
Good evening, my name is Cassandra Hallmark, excuse me, I am from Los Banos, I am also part of the Los Banos VFW 2487, and we are organizing for our parade again this year, it will be held on November 7th, starting at 11 o'clock on Sixth Street, and it's actually extended down to the fairgrounds this year, what I'm asking for tonight is if you have a loved one that is military, has returned, you are a veteran, or you know someone who is a veteran, to please invite them out and ask, you know, tell them thank you, stick them in the parade, because I'm worried, it's about this time last year, I didn't have any applications back, and you know, I just worry about everything, but, the parade turned out wonderful last year, but we are asking for participation, and if, if the mood strikes you, please build a float, that, that sounds like fun, doesn't it? Yeah, so, anyway, if you need an application, you can stop by my office at 824 Fifth Street, it's for name on you, you can almost see the sign, anyway, or you can contact me by phone, 209-534-2513, okay, thank you.
Thank you, and the parade was excellent last year.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak at the public forum?
My name is Cynthia, I'm from Valley Crisis Center, we're a nonprofit organization dedicated to providing lifesaving services to children and families affected by domestic violence and sexual abuse in Merced County, during the month of October, we celebrate Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and we will be holding our fourth annual Peace for Families event that we will be hosting in partnership with Seroptimist International of Los Banos, and Los Banos Police Department, the march will be held on Friday, October 16th at 6:00 p.m., and we, we will be meeting at Pacheco Park, from there, we will be marching to the Police Annex Building, where there will be food, activities for the kids, and resource booths, we will also have special speakers and a moment of silence for all the victims lost, we would like to invite you to come join us, and help support our community and those whose lives are or have been affected by violence, if you have any questions or would like further information, you can contact our interim program director, Chi Yang, at 209-725-7900, thank you all for your time, and have a great evening.
And thank you for doing that every year, it's very important. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak at the public forum? Not seeing or hearing anyone, I will now close the public forum, and we will go on to item seven, consideration of approval of agenda, items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine, and will be voted on in one motion unless removed from the consent agenda by a city council member, and tonight we have, Director Maloney?
Items on the consent agenda are as follows, warrant numbers 155060 through 155299, in the amount of $969,645.13, city council... City Council Resolution Number 5691 urging the state of California to provide new sustainable funding for state and local transportation infrastructure. City Council Resolution Number 5692, accepting the Santa Rita Avenue Water Extension Project as complete and authorizing the filing of a notice of completion with the Merced County Recorder. City Council Resolution Number 5693, accepting the M Street Water Extension Project as complete and authorizing the filing of a notice of completion with the Merced County Recorder. And the items are to be approved as submitted.
Okay, is there any city council member who would like to remove, for discussion, an item from the consent agenda? And if not, do I have a motion? Mr. Silvera?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted.
I have a second. Mrs. Stonegrove?
Second.
Motion by Silvera, second by Stonegrove, to approve the consent agenda as submitted. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. Let's go on to item eight, public hearing. If you challenge the proposed action as described herein in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing described herein or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. Item 8A, public hearing, to receive public comment and consideration of an ordinance amending Title VIII Building Regulations of the City of Los Banos Municipal Code to provide an expediated or expedited streamlined solar permitting process that complies with the Solar Rights Act and Assembly Bill 2188. An ordinance number 1133, amending Title VIII of the Los Banos Municipal Code by adding Chapter VI to provide an expedited streamlined permitting process for small residential rooftop solar systems. And we will now go to, oh, we're going to Mark Fagen, correct? Or Tim? Uh, Tim, okay, Tim, let's go to you.
Thank you, Mayor. I've asked Mike Brinkman from CSG Consultants, he's the one that introduced it to you two weeks ago, and he'll be wrapping things up for us tonight. Thank you.
Hi, Mike.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, City Council. In September 2014, the California State Legislature passed and the governor signed Assembly Bill 2188, which requires local agencies to have expedited permit processing for small, small residential rooftop solar energy systems. AB 2188 provides that it's the policy of the state to promote and encourage the installation and use of solar energy systems by limiting obstacles to their use and by minimizing permitting costs of such systems. In furtherance of that objective, Section 65850.5G1 of the California Government Code requires that on or before September 30th, 2015, every city and county must adopt an ordinance that creates a streamlined expedited permitting process for small residential rooftop solar energy systems. The ordinance codifies the requirements, such as accepting and approving applications electronically, directing the city's building official to develop a checklist of all requirements with which small rooftop residential energy systems shall comply to be eligible for expedited review, and authorizing the building official to administratively approve such applications. Staff anticipates little change to the city's permit issuance procedures in order to comply with the requirements of AB 2188. With that, are there any questions if you have?
Okay, are there any questions from council at this time? Right, why don't we now open up the public hearing? Thanks, Mike, and if we have any other questions, please sit down and we'll call you back up. Okay, is there anyone who would like to comment on ordinance number 1133? I'll now open the public hearing. Not seeing or hearing anyone, I will now close the public hearing and bring it back to council level. Mrs. Lewis?
Well, if there are no comments from council in regards to this bill, first of all, as staff had indicated to us at, at the first presentation, the first reading, they have already been ahead of the game and have streamlined the process for residents of Los Banos who want to get applications for rooftop solar systems. So thank you to our staff for being on top of that process for us. And without further ado, I'd like to make a motion to waive the second reading of ordinance number 1133.
Okay, Mr. Freya?
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Lewis, second by Freya, to waive the second reading, yeah, waive the second reading of ordinance number 1133. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. Mrs. Lewis?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance number 1133 as read by title.
Mr. Freya?
Second.
Motion by Lewis, second by Freya, for the, for the adoption of ordinance number 1133. And Director Maloney, roll call vote?
Freya?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Silvera?
Yes.
Stonegrove?
Yes.
Roll call?
Yes, motion carried. Let's go on to item B, public hearing, to receive public comment, consideration of eliminating condition number 17 of conditional use permit number 2014-09 for Mibario Food and Gas Mart located at 403 North Mercy Springs Road, APN 082072024. Item B1, City Council Resolution Number 5694, approving the elimination and condition of approval number 17 for conditional use permit, number 2014-09 for Mibario Food and Gas Mart located at 403 North Mercy Springs Road. And we will go to Senior Planner Elms.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm, so to give a background on this project, back in July 9th of 2014, the planning commission conducted a public hearing, and at that time, they recommended approval of conditional use permit to the city council. And then subsequently, on August 6th, 2014, the city council conducted a public hearing and conditionally approved this conditional use permit for the on sale, excuse me, the off sale of beer and wine at Mibario Food and Gas Mart. The applicant at that time of the public hearing did request the city council consider revising condition number 17. And this particular condition required the applicant to sell nothing smaller than a four-pack of beer. And that was the condition as was recommended by the planning commission at that time. So after much discussion that night, the city council ended up modifying the condition to say that it shall sell nothing smaller than a three-pack of beer. So the condition as it reads right now, number 17, states that the applicant operator shall sell nothing smaller than a three-pack of beer. This restriction shall not apply to wine, which may be sold in single bottles of not less than 750 milliliters. Wine coolers, malt-based products, and bottles smaller than 750 milliliters may be sold in the manufacturer's prepackaged containers and shall not be sold as singles. So now, the request that we have before you, the applicant has requested that condition number 17 be eliminated. He has been operational for about a year with his conditional use permit. And the condition per the request by the applicant is that it's unfair and unreasonable in light of Circle K having no such restrictions on their conditional use permit for the sale of alcohol. Currently, there are 18 similar businesses with no restrictions. And the, the similar businesses, what were counted were convenience stores, small markets, either or, and then fuel stations as well. So that would be considered to what Mibario is. What we do see is that the larger retailers do have this restriction to sell nothing smaller than a four-pack of beer. So that is within those conditional use permits, and those apply to Walmart, Target, and Walgreens. But the singles, the applicant does state that it creates disadvantage with similar stores. And this does include the nearest competitor, which is Circle K across the street. So the project is located at 403 North Mercy Springs Road, which is the northwest corner of Overland Avenue and North Mercy Springs, and it's highlighted for you, it's pointed for you here in this blue arrow. So a part of the analysis that staff conducted when reviewing this request, we came down really to two questions. Basically, does the elimination of condition number 17 still follow all the required findings per the municipal code? And then two, is condition number 17 unreasonable or arbitrary in light of the fact that similar situated businesses, such as Circle K, are not subject to this same condition? And what makes them unique versus Mibario? Is, is Mibario unique in some sort of situation? And also with this request, staff is always evaluating conditional use permits, always evaluating conditions and whether they are reasonable for businesses. We do listen to the business when they're, when they do have an issue or a situation or a burden. And so with this particular application, we could see that, that it was creating a burden for the business, and so we analyzed it to see what we could do. So our response basically to the analysis was that it would not create a nuisance or be detrimental to the public health, safety, morals, comforts, and general welfare of the city. So we were able to make that determination. And that even with the elimination, could the findings still be made, which they can? And then similar businesses are not burdened with the same condition, so it may be found to be arbitrary and unreasonable as the applicant's business is not any different to similar businesses. Myself and the police chief did a ride-along. We went to similar businesses around town comparing and looking really for what would make Mibario unique, what would make them different than the similar businesses that they're being compared to. And we were unable to find anything that stood out that made them different than their similar uses. So public comment, public hearing notice was published in the Los Banos Enterprise on August 21st, 2015, and as of today's date, no comments have been received. So with that, staff is requesting that the city council adopt Resolution Number 5694, eliminating condition number 17 of conditional use permit number 2014-09 for Mibario Food and Gas Mart. And that concludes my presentation, and I'm going to turn it over to Steve.
Thank you, Mayor. One of the most important things that I do as city manager is I make recommendations to the city council, and a year ago, I got this one wrong. I have apologized to Jay, I went to the planning commission and spoke to them a couple weeks ago. What I did was, a year ago, I said the recommendation was to not allow him to sell singles or forty ounce beers. And so we said, okay, we're going to limit it as a three-pack. What I should have said was, if we have any trouble with your business or your conditional use permit, we're going to visit with you and we're going to bring you back for reconsideration. Totally got it wrong. So I want to publicly apologize to Jay. Sorry about that, you've been very patient with us. I did check with our police department, we haven't had any issues with his business at all over the last year. So with that, I'll just stop talking because it seems to get me in a little bit of trouble. But again, I, I got this one wrong, we're trying to get it right tonight and move forward. So, thank you.
Okay, let me open up the public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak on ordinance number 113, oh, excuse me, City Council Resolution Number 5694?
Good evening to the mayor, to city council members, to city manager, city attorney, and to all those of you here tonight. I am Pastor Jenkins, pastor of New Canaan Missionary Baptist Church at 424 North Mercy Springs Road. And I've just come tonight just to, one, to be in support of, to Mibario, just to let them know that we still stand as a church united as we were a little over a year and a half ago as we came to the city council with our concerns about the previous store that occupied that location, and that was Circle K. As we made a statement then that we had no issues with Circle K being there and that location, we had no problems with that. And I just want to come tonight to make sure that we make that clear, that we will continue to make that stand, we will not change that. And I want to make sure for the record that it is, that, so that it's clear that Pastor Jenkins is not here tonight to encourage or to the sale of alcohol. But I am here to stand for that, that it is right when it comes to one business compared to another, and to have the equal opportunity between the two. I will stand for that. So I just want to make that clear so that everyone, I don't want anybody showing up on Sunday and wanting to get a beer out of the refrigerator at New Canaan. So I just want to make that clear. I'm here to support what I believe is only fair and right. And I think they have been a very good neighbor to us in, in this last year. We haven't had to see any of Chief Breezy's officers out there, and so that's good. And, and that's what it's all about. So being a church and providing services for the community, and with that store being in the community, they have actually been very good in the community. They've done some things that have, even our members have commented on some of the things that they've done as far as helping the community and handing out, I think they did turkeys at the last Thanksgiving, they kind of handed out to the community. So they did a, they come in and they came in doing and helping, and we like that. So to Mayor Vialta, I just want to say that we come tonight in support, and I do thank you, to our city manager for that public apology tonight. And it's, I think it's just important that when we are doing something and we realize that there is an issue, that we can all become adults and be professional and then stand up and say, we made a mistake, let's correct it. So I thank you tonight, and I pray that everything will go well for Mibario. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Pastor. And it's perfectly clear your stand, we understand. Okay, is there anyone else who would like to speak at the public hearing, City Council Resolution Number 5694?
For the record, my name is Jay Burke, I'm the owner of Mibario Food and Gas Mart. I just want to say thank you, Steve, for standing up and making this happen for me. I greatly appreciate the courage it took. As a year ago, I stood here, I promised and I delivered. And I'm going to do that forward, going forward too, with our expansions, with the community service, with giving back, with no police calls as promised. And I just hope to say in form of you guys and the support to your small business, because I believe you guys, team up together, help the other small businesses in the town that can succeed as a, as a community. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone who'd like to speak at the public hearing? Not seeing or hearing anyone, I will now close the public hearing and bring it back to council level. Questions or comments or votes? Mr. Silvera?
Comment, as I remember this very clearly, and I have spoken to Jay about it a few times, and I'm glad to see that staff has made the recommendation. I just, this isn't a discussion whether you agree with selling alcohol or not selling alcohol. What this is, is a discussion about what's fair. And I feel like he was put at a competitive disadvantage, and maybe it didn't hurt as bad while the new Circle K was being built. But once they opened up, they were able to offer everything right across the street, and he was stuck not being able to offer that. So I can say that I'm in support of staff's recommendation of, of doing away with condition number 17. And he has delivered, he has proven. I visit his store every now and again, and it's, it's very clean, very well-kept. And that was one of my biggest concerns from the very beginning when he, when Circle K left there, was I just didn't want it to turn into just, you know, an ice or, it's in the entrance to, it's one of the entrances into our city. And I feel like he's done a really good job of it, and he keeps a clean store and runs a really tight ship over there. So if there's no other comments from council, I would like to make a motion to approve City Council Resolution Number 5694, approving the elimination of condition of approval number 17 for conditional use permit number 2014-09 for Mibario Food and Gas Mart located at 403 North Mercy Springs Road.
I have a second. Mrs. Stonegrove?
Yes, I'd like to second the motion and also thank Mr. Burke for being here and for being a business owner in our community. A year ago, we had this item before us, and I felt this, this restriction was unreasonable and unfair, and I'm glad that we have the opportunity to make the correction, and I hope that- And I hope that as a council going forward, we put a little more thought into these decisions when we make them and don't make this mistake with another business owner. Thank you.
Okay. I have a motion by Silveira, second by Stonegrove. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. Okay, it's going to item C, public hearing. To receive public comment and consideration of adopting a proposed ordinance for the regulation of special events located in Title IX, Chapter III of the Los Banas Municipal Code. Ordinance number 1134, adding Article 41, Chapter III to Title IX of the Los Banas Municipal Code relating to special events on public property. And, Mr. Frey?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Respectfully recuse myself for this item and the following item, as these ordinances, these next items very strongly affect the Chamber of Commerce, where my wife is the executive director, and therefore creates a conflict of interest for me. So if you will please excuse me.
And now we'll go to Senior Planner Elms for discussion.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. So I just wanted to start off going through the background of special events and how they are processed right now through the city of Los Banas. So currently, an individual or a group would fill out a form to notify the city of their special event, and it would be, it needs to be 21 days in advance of their event. The city then routes through the various departments, the application, particularly the site plan. Most often, this goes to public safety, and if there's anything that would require public works, it would go there. But most of the time, it's public safety due to concerns with circulation. And so it's routed, and I ask for comments. And then I receive comments, we issue a permit with conditions based on those comments that were discussed with the different departments. There's no formal process in place. This is a process, though, that staff has initiated ourselves internally to ensure the health, safety, and welfare of the community, but there is no actual process set by the municipal code. So the current ordinance that we're working with, the proposal, the, actually, the intent of our current ordinance that we have right now, the intent is to address temporary uses of private property that are not a use by right and require additional regulations. So that doesn't really answer the question when it comes to public property. And the actual ordinance that we have right now is geared towards temporary uses on private property. So these types of uses would be like pumpkin patches, Christmas tree lots, parking lot sales, and promotional outdoor events. But it does not address activities occurring on public property, which we receive the most applications for, and these would be like street fairs, craft fairs, car shows, So the proposal that we have before you tonight, this ordinance, would be for any person desiring to sponsor a parade, public assembly, or other special event on public property, they shall first receive a permit. So they first need to apply for the permit. The ordinance defines what a parade is and what a special event is, and that's within your staff report. And then it does have exemptions. It's exempting funeral processions, parades on sidewalk, spontaneous events, events for government entities, expressive activity, block parties, because that is being addressed in a different ordinance, which is coming before you tonight, and also farmers markets, which will be within a different ordinance, being proposed to you tonight as well. Also, the proposed ordinance, a special event must be obtained if it meets not less, it has to be not less than 30 days or more than one year and two months before the event. This was actually something that was discussed at the planning commission level. It was a member of the chamber that brought to our attention, previously, we had not less than 30 days and not more than 180 days, but it was a comment that was brought before us by the chamber, that some of their events, they need to know at least well in a year in advance. An example would be, say, Mother's Day in the Park, where they have booths and they're securing tenants for those booths a year in advance. So they would like to know a year in advance whether they would be able to apply for a special event, a permit or not, and what the cost would be so that then they could pass down that cost to those booths. Also, within three working days, the Community and Economic Development Department would circulate the application to the departments that it affects and then ask for comments. So that would be public safety, police, fire, and also public works. And then within 30 days, according to the proposed ordinance, the Community and Economic Development Department would render a decision to approve, conditionally approve, or deny the permit. And then based on that decision, the applicant would have a right to appeal to the planning commission. So the Community and Economic Development Director's decision could be appealed up to the planning commission. Also, within the proposed ordinance, the applicant must sign an indemnity agreement to reimburse the city for any costs incurred by it in repairing damage to city property and indemnify the city from any liability. So if there's any property damage, whether it's on the sidewalk, on the street, anything within the right of way, then they would be responsible and liable to cover those charges and indemnify the city from any liability. They also shall obtain liability insurance of at least $1 million per occurrence. And really, this is actually per our risk management authority. It does state that the minimum is $1 million. So this would just be in accordance with what we are supposed to be doing currently with our risk management authority. And they also shall pay the city for all city departmental service charges which are incurred in connection with or resulting from the permit. So with the organization of this ordinance, there would be a non-refundable application processing fee, and that processing fee is a one-time fee. It's for staff time to review and analyze the project. At the planning commission level, there was a major concern that, the fear of the unknown, what would these applications cost? Would they be extravagant? And which staff replied back that it would just cover staff's time for review and for analysis. It would be a full cost recovery. So with an analysis that I had done at the planning commission level, the application would be about $150 approximately, and that would actually be coming before you in a resolution at the next public hearing if this ordinance is approved tonight. And then the service charge that was also discussed, what that would really mean. And in discussions with our police chief, it really depends on the size of the event and the intensity of the event. We have a huge list of different events that are on public property. They range from parades to street fairs to Mother's Day in the Park, Father's Day in the Park, or the Harvest Festival. So there's a wide range, and some are intense and some are less intense. And intense, what I mean is they require more time by the police department and services versus less time. So basically, an overall umbrella, depending on the type of event, would be $50 for one full-time officer per hour. But like I said, that would depend on the size of the event and would be determined by the police chief during the application process. So that pretty much sums up what this ordinance is about and what we're proposing for you tonight. So with that, I am requesting that the city council waive the first reading and introduce ordinance number 1134, adding Article 41 of Title IX, Chapter III of the Los Banas Municipal Code relating to special events. That concludes my staff report.
Okay. Thank you. All right, let's go to, do I have any comments from council members at this time? Okay. Let's go to the public, yes, Mrs. Lewis.
Yes, Stacy. When you were talking about various pricings depending on where the event's going to be held, and of course, with the police department, any other departments that may be involved, is there going to be some sort of standardization as to if they're going to use a park, just what the cost of the park is going to be? Or if it's a parade, how many blocks are going to be blocked off? Is there a charge per block? Or how's that going to happen? What I'm getting to is, you know, making something clear, perhaps on a price listing for the community so that they know exactly what they're going to be looking at as far as financial output.
So in discussions amongst staff on how we would coordinate this, well, the first time around, it would be a learning process for us. And so it would be dependent, as you've mentioned, the streets that would be closed, the intensity of the type of event. But after that, most of these events are annually, and so we would already know what they would consist of, and the applicant would know basically what we would be expecting of them. I don't think we have an actual figure based on the amount of street closure, but as I stated, $50 was really the, what we could narrow it down to. I know that the police department does volunteer quite a bit of their time. In terms of vitals, they will volunteer and be a part of the event and help out as much as they can. So a lot of these events, just, it's variable. It's that moving, that number's moving because we don't quite know what the event would consist of.
So this first year is going to be like a testing to see what it will cost the city to have an event under an application, and then we can move forward from there?
Absolutely, yes.
All right, thank you.
We already have a lot of history on this, though, of what events cost, because a lot of the events that we have are reoccurring every year. And the chief can pretty much pinpoint what the coverage is going to be, can't he?
Well, we've discussed this. The issue is that some of these events are changing their, and the most intense events are the parades, is what we've discussed. And those events are changing their parade routes. So it really depends on the site plan that they give and the direction, the specifics that they give us in their application.
And how much work that the event coordinator can do as opposed to our people doing that, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right. All right, why, does anyone else have a comment? Okay, let's go to the public hearing. To receive public comment and consideration of adopting a proposed ordinance for the regulation of special events located at Title IX, Chapter III of the Los Banas Municipal Code. Is there anyone who would like to comment on ordinance number 1134 at this time?
Hello, Mr. Mayor, city councilmen. I am Louis Oliver from the Los Banas D E S. I am the treasurer for the D E S. I'm here to speak on this matter, but I am not alone. Here, we have other organizations and other reps from those organizations that feel the same way that I do. Our Lady of Guadalupe is here, also our reps from Our Lady of Fatima is here, from what I can see. Our biggest issue with this is what Councilmember Louis has already been talking about, is the actual cost for the special events. A lot of our organizations, we are nonprofits, we all run by donations. So it is very imperative to us what it's going to cost and what the city is thinking about charging to put these certain events on. Now, I know Stacy was talking about the parades, they're all different, and, you know, and every event is different, which we totally understand. But going back to, going back to our point is, what Councilmember Louis was talking about, we would like a little bit more clarification of what these things are actually going to cost. Is it, you know, if you're going to have a parade, are you going to charge by the block? Is it going to be a certain amount of money? I understand they're talking about, you know, certain volunteers, police escorts, how much it would cost for them if they did a parade. And I'm just saying in an example, in an example for us, is where our celebration, we've been around for 101 years, we've been doing parade for 100 and some odd years, although it's changed, of course, the parade route, as has already been spoken. But we're really concerned about the actual cost of the special event ordinance and what it's going to be to put in our budget to keep our, what was it going to, I forget the name on the top of my head, but the things that we have been doing all these years to keep it alive, to keep it going. And like I said in the beginning, we're very concerned because pretty much all of our funding comes from donations. And, you know, a little bit fundraisers here, you know, if we have a takeout dinner. And I'm just saying that as, for example, for us, I'm not speaking on that part of Our Lady of Guadalupe or Our Lady of Fatima. But in speaking in, just in our terms that I know for us, we have those certain things to raise a little bit of money so we can keep the lights on, basically, and put our events and put our, like our special celebration that we usually have in May and June. And to keep, the word I was looking for earlier was to keep our culture alive. Everybody has their own culture, and they have their own certain things that they like to do for their culture to keep it alive, to keep it going. And we would like, and we would like to continue that. But if there was a certain thing like this that it's going to hamper us for something that we've been doing for years and years and years and doing in the community, we would like a little bit more clarification. Just reading the proposal doesn't really give a clarification of how much it's going to actually cost these organizations if they decide to, example, have a parade, to have a closure. So that's why I wanted to bring up to the city tonight, just to get a little bit more clarification on that.
Okay. This is not the end of the process. If this is passed or not passed tonight, if it is passed, then what happens? There's going to be a separate action to bring back the costs. And at that time, then, so first, we adopt the plan, and then the second part is that we will bring back a, another resolution with the fee costs at that time, so you'll know exactly what those fees are.
Okay.
So two separate actions.
Gotcha.
Okay?
Okay.
Thank you. So just let me be clear to everyone, the action tonight is to adopt an action plan. The, another agenda item will come to us, when, Stacy?
September 16th, and it's been noticed in the Los Banas Enterprise.
Okay. It'll come to us September 16th, Louis. So if your groups would like to come back, what would happen is that you would know the fee costs and what the city is proposing for us, and then we will vote on those, whether to accept them or not accept them. And part of the, the, not, I'm not going to say the problem, but part of what happened is that in years past, we've had maybe two or three events that were funded. All of a sudden, we've had a number of groups come forward, and they would like to have events also. So the object of fairness and making sure that we accommodate everyone who comes before us, and how much can we accommodate them, and what can we do to reduce the cost as much as possible and to accommodate everyone who wants to have a function. So for us, it's a matter of fairness, and before, when we had two or three events in a year, sometimes we were able to cover those. But now, with the extensive requests that are coming up and more people on the horizon, we have to come up with some kind of plan in order to get some kind of partial reimbursement because it's amounting to a tremendous amount of money now. And so that was the intent of this proposal, and it's a matter of fairness, to be quite honest with you, and to make sure that everyone's accommodated. And so I don't want people coming to me and saying, you treated me differently than you treated that other group. And I don't think any of the council wants that, so. Yes, I'm getting it. Yeah, yeah. No, we're not done with the public hearing. Okay. So I just wanted to make sure that we do that. Okay. All right. Is there anyone else who would like to speak at the public hearing? Yes, come on up. No.
Mayor, city council members. I'm Alicia de Cochea, and I come to, I want to reinforce what the gentleman said, first of all. And I just heard about it today. I should be more in touch with what's going on. I'm sorry about that. But... more in touch with what's going on. I'm sorry about that. But we're here tonight because we do not agree with, hopefully, they will not be charging for the, or, which is not a parade, it's a procession. And it's like the gentleman said, it's part of our culture, our faith, evangelizing. So we hope that we will reconsider, and, or consider, because we haven't reconsidered yet, that we will be able to continue. And I will, we will wait and see what happens. But we will be back, hopefully. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Ed Amaral, resident of Los Banes, and I'm here actually to speak on behalf of both the Our Lady of Fatima Society, whose president is here tonight, Tim Brazil, but he's on crutches, so he had me come up here, and also on behalf of Los Banes Portuguese D E S Association, which I'm also a director of. So I've got foot in both camps. And I understand what's been said and the points brought up by Mr. Olivera and also by the other lady, which I do, starting off, that is one thing, I wanted to kind of enlighten some of the members of the council. Most of you are real familiar with the, of both these organizations and what they do. But for the council, the members that aren't, the, both of them are nonprofit groups. Los Banes Portuguese D E S Association was started, like Louis Olivera said, in 1914, so it's just over 100 years to celebrate their anniversary. The Our Lady of Fatima Society, early 1950s, so both of them are even older than me, so that's pretty old. So, you know, that's starting off. And they've been doing their processions for many years, and most of the processions actually have been the same route. So it's been, I'm involved with both. They really haven't changed. I mean, so they're the same routes. They've changed a few times over the years when the church moved, but other than that, it's about the same. Both groups are nonprofits, as Mr. Olivera pointed out. They really rely on the community and the volunteers. You know, they've had great community support, including a lot of the council members, some that had to reclusive themselves. But so they, you know, everybody's helped. And that's why, and what they do is, Our Lady of Fatima Society raises money for the Our Lady of Fatima School, also donates to New Bethany and the Church. The Los Banes Portuguese D E S Association raises money for a lot of different groups. They've actually sobered grad, different groups, and also to keep up the traditions that they have, which is to have this celebration every year, that they feed the poor. That's the idea, feed everyone. So they can't do that if they don't raise funds. And but it's one point I did want to bring up. Both of these organizations, the basis of the Our Lady of Fatima Society, I mean, it's great, they're trying to raise money, but it's, their purpose is devotion to Our Lady of Fatima. Whereas the Los Banes Portuguese D E S Association is also devotion to the Holy Spirit. The D E S, that's what it stands for. I don't want to pronounce it wrong, but it's Divine Holy Spirit. And Louis can say it the right way in Portuguese. But that's the purpose of both organizations are religious based. So having said that, you know, they don't, they're volunteers. They don't meet all the time. So a lot of people really weren't aware of what's going on with the city. I know that it's, some of the stuff's been in the paper, but they really didn't know. I mean, most of these groups didn't know until today that this was before the council. And I know that may be kind of hard for people to realize, but they're volunteers. They have meetings occasionally, a lot of these groups, mainly they meet before their celebration. So they really aren't, they're just focused on their own lives. This is a volunteer, this is something else they do. So having said that, they really rely on the contributions that they get. And of course, any charges that they have are just means that there's less money, that they can contribute to the causes and continue their tradition. Like I said, the tradition's been going on for years. In reading the ordinance, you know, I understand what the mayor said regarding the city council, that it does come back for, before the city council, but I read it as it's only coming back regarding the application fee. I mean, maybe I'm reading it wrong, but that's what I read in the ordinance, is that it's going to be accompanied by a nonrefundable, nontransferable application fee in amount established by resolution of the city council. So all these other fees that we're talking about, the reimbursement for the city, I don't think the city has any, city council has any oversight over those charges, as I read it. I may be wrong, but I mean, that's what I'm reading. So to say, so they don't know. And they've asked staff, well, what is the cost going to be? And the staff didn't know. And this is the same route we're going on for years. I mean, we're not changing, you know, this is something, they've made a permit every year. These groups have actually done the permit every year, paid the fee, had the police. And by the way, the police have been great, you know, I mean, they, they're great in helping with these processions. And by the way, they, I will say, as the lady said, that their processions, I kept.
You know, I kind, I kind of hate to cut off an attorney, but I got, I have to, okay? I know. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak at the public forum? Okay, not seeing or hearing anyone. I will now close the public forum, bring it back to council level. Mr. Carrigan, you have a comment?
Just one quick comment, and I hear you, gentlemen, and we will have another conversation about this, but we don't know today if you're going to have 100 people at your event or 3,000 people at your event. We don't know the length or the size, and you know, but we don't know. So when we say we don't know what it's going to cost, it's because we need to sit with you. So, you know, Chief Breezy of the Police Department and Stacy and talk through the nuances of your event, your parade, whatever it is. And then we can say, okay, here's what we believe our charge, our cost would be, and then we can talk from there and try to. I can tell you this, since I've been here, which has been two and a half years now, everyone that's come in to sit with the Chief Breezy has always walked away, and they know their figure, they've been comfortable with their figure. And we try to work that number down to the minimum. And if anything, Gary will come to me after the event and say, "We charged this, but the actual figure was this." We don't ever go back and ask for that. So you guys, they get a pretty good deal. We're just trying to cover our costs, and then we'll absolutely talk about volunteers, or is there a way to knock that number down? So when, I don't want you to walk out of here going, "They don't know what they're talking about." We don't know anything about your event. So we're going to have that talk, and we will continue to have that talk. So when you see application fee, yeah, that's probably just the fee to circulate that application so each of the departments can weigh in. But we truly want to sit with you and anybody out there that has an event to put on an event, so we can talk about the details. And then we'll give you a better number, a real good number. And Stacy, if I miss anything, please jump in, because I know you're knee deep in this, and I want these guys to walk out of here, at least have a better understanding of kind of our position and how we got to where we got to tonight.
Yeah. Finance Director Williams just made a great comment that it's not that we've not had these events in the past and that we don't know that they're annual. We do, but we never had to cost it out.
Right.
So, and that's what we need to figure out. And we understand, we hear them loud and clear, and by the next public hearing, we should have a little bit clearer direction for them. The application fee, as you mentioned, that's, that's pretty much set in stone. That's hourly, and that's just full cost recovery. But we will sit down with the police chief and kind of narrow it down a little bit, as much as we can. I don't know if the police chief has anything to add.
Gary? Evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight on this topic. And I understand and I hear what everyone in the, from the audience is referring to tonight. It's one of the balances that we try and provide as a city to the residents of our community. And let me tell you, I bend over backwards, and I try and work with every organization that comes along. But the topic of volunteers came up, and it really depends a lot on our volunteer staff. If we can have an event staffed by volunteers, we will most certainly do that. They're trained to do those things. They use our police cars, they've got traffic vests, and we try to utilize them as best we can to minimize those costs. But my charge in life is to make sure that the public is safe when they do these events. Unfortunately, the volunteers are not always available. Even then, we use exempt employees who aren't able to use or acquire overtime in order to keep our costs low, to have these events get pulled off as cheaply as we can, because every single one of them is a good event for our community. It brings the community together, and we realize that, realize that at the staff level. And we try really, really hard, like the city manager said, to minimize the cost as much as we can. The sad part is, sometimes I, I just am no longer in a position to allow the officers working patrol to take an hour or two away from their day to work a parade, because then they're committed to that parade and that cause, which means that they cannot respond to calls, and it's just not possible anymore. And there has been a significant increase in the events that we provide service to. But again, we try to do that every shape, form possible with the use of volunteers or with the use of other personnel that don't charge the applicant money. But it's just a balance. So when we talk about, we don't know what the, what the cost is going to be for a parade. Sometimes that's true, and I will sit here and tell you, it's really hard to know what that cost is, because if I can have 10 volunteers at a parade, we've cut the cost down significantly. Sometimes the volunteers on our staff are not available. They're covered by our insurance. They're trained to do these events. We rely on them to do them. They know how to talk on the radio. But sometimes they're just not available. So that's always the hard part about doing the events that we do. But let me tell you, we try really hard to pull off every event we can with the least possible charge to the community that we can, because I know that's what you all want us to do. So we certainly try to do that. So if you have any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Thank you.
You know, the people that spoke tonight, you have your volunteers within your organization, correct? And you don't pay those volunteers. Those people volunteer because out of the kindness of their heart, and they believe in the organization that they're volunteering for, okay? Maybe there's a way to, we ask for vital volunteers. That's the name of our volunteer group, Vital Volunteers. Maybe there is a way where if, if they were cleared through our police chief, and they became a vital volunteer, they could be a vital volunteer for your activity, because then they'd be trained by our police department. And not only that, we would extend the vital group, and then the end result would be, the cost would be lower for you. But we have to make sure that event coordinators are trained the way the chief would want them trained. There's no charge to be a vital volunteer, and then you would have the access and to know that you were trained with an event. And I know years ago, we didn't have security at events. Never had them. And now you have to hire security. So that's an added cost for you. So over the years, things have compiled, and I can see why, that you have to cut costs as much as you can, and we have to cost out what we need to cost out in order to make sure that, because the money that goes out every year for these, for these events, it can be staggering if we have to supply all the people power to make sure these events are safe. And that's the chief's number one concern. But I would strongly suggest that your groups could be double, do double duty. Volunteer for your event and still know the proper procedure for volunteering in order to cut the cost down. So that's just an idea. Okay, let's go to, we have some comments. Mrs. Lewis, you're first.
Thank you. And Mayor, that's a good suggestion, and I'd like to piggyback on that, that not only if you have people in your organization that can be trained by our police department to become volunteers for your events, they can also help with other events as well. We need as many volunteers in our city as we can possibly get with our police department, and it certainly would reduce the cost to any organization. So that's, you know, it's like a charitable gift, if I can put it that way, to other organizations that need to carry on with their parades and such that they would like to have and events in the city of Los Banes. But kind of piggybacking on my original question to staff is, I feel it's really important for just basic things that we know we can price out, to have a price list for the community. I realize that a lot is predicated on what the police chief sees as how many volunteers that he needs to control an event that's going to be happening. But people need to know what kind of monies they're going to be expending from their budgets to put on an event annually. Whether we, you know, we have our application process, if we're going to be charging by the block, whatever the case may be, we need to have those prices available to them so that they know that this is the basic cost of putting on an event. There may be extenuating circumstances where there's an additional cost because of what the police chief decides his staff is going to have to do, or if there are enough volunteers to help control a parade, or like the event that D E S likes to put on and Our Lady of Fatima. But, you know, I would feel uncomfortable walking into a situation saying, "Oh, I would like to do this and this and this," and not have a price list telling me, "These are the basic things that I need to have money for." So that's, that's just how I feel. I think that we really need to work hard to give the public a dollar amount on the basics of what we have to provide to them. And anything that's extraordinary in the application process, as you discuss it with each organization, then we can go from there. And as we build and begin to learn how this operates, maybe the price list can become more extensive. But right now, it's, it's a blind faith of luck to ask the public to sit back and wait for a price, and then they don't know how much money to raise, or what's going to come out of their pocket to put on an event that they annually want to contribute in the city. And the various cultural events are very important to any city, not just Los Banes, any city, but particularly to our community, because we have a lot of different cultures in Los Banes, and we have more that are on the horizon as we move forward. So I think it's important that we need to cost this out as quickly as possible. And any ancillary charges that the police chief sees that are necessary, then you can discuss that with the organization. So that's kind of my take on it.
Thank you. Mr. Silveira?
Yeah, Stacy, if you could go back to in your presentation on the amount of time that they have for, to submit the application. And so it says that not less than 30 days before the event, they have to submit the application. But then, when I, then when I continue to read, from when they submit it, you have up until 30 days to get back to them with a decision?
Yes.
It doesn't seem like that's enough time, because if it took you, say, 28 of those 30, I'm not saying it'll take long, but if it took you 28 of those 30, 30 days, how can you really plan to have an event? So?
So I'll tell you, from a staff perspective, we're looking at it as the first go around. It may take us a couple days, but the second go around, or the second year, we're going to become pretty familiar with these. And as it is, Gary and I are pretty familiar already. We already have a system kind of packed down, and what takes the most time is really the community and economic development's time in creating the permit, analyzing it, and then sending, routing it out to the different departments. But what Gary and I have talked about, it's really, once we nail this down, it'd be about 15 minutes. I'd say, Gary, probably now on our special events, you may spend about 15 minutes or so, give or take. We look at a site plan, we look at circulation, and then we have our boilerplate conditions that are already made up. And if the situation is any different than, or there's something unique to it, then, then we'll, we'll discuss and add conditions. But it's typically pretty clear cut, and we've got that down pat. So I think 30 days would be efficient, would be sufficient.
But it's, but I guess we're, they have up until 30 days before their event to submit an application, but then you have 30 days, you have 30 days to respond to them. It seems like that's, there's a possibility there. I guess I'm not comfortable with saying you have, your minimum time to submit it is 30 days, and, but we have 30 days to get back to you. So for whatever reasons, then, now all of a sudden, you know, and now we're talking that there could be costs associated with this event, and then, well, you know, they, you can't, you got to plan these events, and you just don't plan them in a week or two weeks or whatever. So
Absolutely.
I don't know if... I don't know if, I don't know what the answer is. Is it, do you make it so that they have to have it turned in a minimum of sixty days before the event instead of thirty days before the event?
They're annual events, right? I mean, these are annual events, so.
I just...
If it's a year ninety days, it doesn't matter.
I, and then I, so I'll let the city attorney answer that question, and then I have another question for him.
Well, it actually says not less than thirty days before the event, and then the city has thirty days to respond. So if you wait till the thirtieth day, you're not, you may not know till the day before your event whether it's been approved. But I think one of the discussions in the planning commission was that we didn't want to make it so onerous to someone, if they had an event that was kind of coming up quickly, that, oh, you had to give us ninety days notice, and they couldn't put on their event because they didn't know ninety days in advance that they were going to put on the event. So, yeah, shame on you if you wait till the thirtieth day to put in your application, understanding that you may not know till right before your event starts. So the idea was to squeeze the time to allow people who are putting on events on short notice to actually have short notice. And I think actually, the processing of these is probably more like a couple of weeks. So that was the idea, is not to make someone have to plan out sixty or ninety days in advance if there was an event they wanted to put on in short notice. But we wanted to give ourselves enough time, our staff wanted to give themselves enough time to deal with it depending on what the event was, so.
So, so I guess, I don't know.
So if you want to wait till thirty days before your event to start thinking about permitting, then you may have short notice. But if you're a planner and planning things out, then you'll know to get your, get your permit in up to a year, up to fourteen months ahead of time.
Okay. I guess that makes more sense. So then my next question to you is, is, I know that when we charge for service, we can't, we're not a for-profit business here. We can only charge what the service costs.
Yeah. These would just be reimbursement for actual costs incurred.
So then my question is, is can we charge less than, can the council set the rate as where it's less than what it actually costs? Is that illegal? Is that legal to do?
Well...
And this isn't on the, so much on the permitting side. What I'm saying, this just goes back to the, what the event's going to cost you. I just know that if you set the price at, okay, if you want to do, you know, you have a setup that says, okay, a block is, a parade is going to be twenty-five dollars a block per hour that you're using, however, whatever you come up with. So you set that rate. Well, what if it actually costs you thirty dollars per hour to do it? This is so that you, because if you're planning something, you want to know what your costs are.
So you start getting into that area of gifting public funds and gifting funds for one group's event and not another event. So you start getting into kind of a little bit of quicksand there.
Okay.
If it's an event that serves the entire community, a community event, it's a little easier to get past the gifting public funds. Is it a service that the city typically provides anyway? That's what Gary was talking about, the vital volunteers, a police officer that maybe is not on call, depending on what kind of event it is, then you can do those kinds of things. But to start, you really start getting into some really tricky areas where you're starting to waive fees for one event, not charging enough for all of the events. It just seems to be so much simpler to, this is the cost of the event that the city's going to bear for your event, and this is what it costs. So waiving fees, discounting fees, it can be done, but it starts getting into issues that you may not want to face later on down the road.
So would it technically be waiving fees if you never had a fee established to begin with?
Yeah, we're, we could be in a situation where we're already gifting public money to an organization to help them put on events. So that's part of what's going on here to clear this up.
Okay. Very good.
And the big, the big thing that the planning commission was talking about is virtually all of these events are put on by nonprofits. So the first issue was, well, maybe we should give some consideration to nonprofits because they're nonprofits and they do public good, and we want these events to continue. But then in analyzing it, virtually it's all nonprofits that are putting on these events, and every, every event is important to that nonprofit. So you kind of got to be careful in dealing with that. The second issue is, if we start doing that, what if we get some huge, you know, the American Cancer Society wants to put on an event that's going to attract five thousand people, and it's going to cost the city ten thousand dollars in extra police service to deal with it, then you get into all of these types of issues that if you just say, your event is going to pay its way in terms of just the cost, we're not, it's not marked up. It's what it costs to have that officer at your event for two hours. That's what it's going to cost. So that's how this was developed and looked at, and it's very hard, and you're struggling with it tonight. The planning commission struggled with it over three meetings as to how can we identify what this, these costs are going to be? Because we don't know what the events are. Are they going to require public works to come clean up the streets? Are they going to require public works to come out and put up barricades? Are they going to require four police officers for six hours? So it's very hard to gauge what those are. Now, what Mrs. Lewis was saying, we could have a list of, this is what it costs to have a police officer at your event for an hour. This is what it costs to have public works put out barricades all over the city if that's what you're doing. So, I mean, there are ways that you can be notified ahead of time, well, these are all things we want to do. What are the costs associated with that? And then the city fine-tune it in terms of what is actually going to be spent.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Let's go to Mrs. Stonegrove.
Thank you. I'm glad we're having the conversation, and I'm glad that Mr. Silveira brought up the point that we're not in this to make a profit, and the permitting fees that are being charged are just to recoup the cost of the city. I'm not at all comfortable in offering city services at anything less than the cost of what it costs for the city to provide those services because I don't think that we should be in the business of saying, you know, they're all, they're all great events, you know, everything that comes before us, and they're mostly, if not all, nonprofits. But I don't think it's up to us to say, you know, this event will, ultimately, the tax, it's taxpayer dollars, and we don't have the responsibility, I don't think, to say, the taxpayers are going to fund your event but not yours, or discount yours and not yours. So I think it's really important to keep in mind the city's perspective, and it's just taxpayer dollars that we're, that we're talking about, and making sure that we treat each group fairly in what we do for one group, we do for the next group, and the next group, and every group that we have come to apply for these permits.
Thank you. Come in.
Yep.
I think, I'm just going to go back to my initial statement. See if you can get people to become vital volunteers. Then they are trained through our police department, and then that cuts down on the amount of money that's going to be put out by the city. Because if the chief feels comfortable with the trainees, and that he could then turn them loose in order to help structure an event and to secure an event, and to make sure that the barriers are put out correctly, the, they could position cars, because we have certain events, the vital volunteers take up a tremendous amount. And where we need police officers there, we don't need police officers because we have the vital volunteers. And that helps cut down on the cost. And that could go across the board for all these organizations. I'm just trying to think of a way, because every council member up here does not want to charge. Deep down, we don't want to charge. But yet, with all the events, and the comments that were made, a gift of public funds, comments that were made, that, that, you know, we have to, we have to at least recoup at least what it cost us. The dollars only go so far. And I just want to think of a way, along with the rest of the council, of how we can cut down on the costs for you. And that's one way to do it, to have trained volunteers. When they're trained, they're trained. So think about that. And then we are going to come back, if this is approved, with a cost sheet. And how, how finite that cost sheet will be, will come back to us, and then we will approve. This body approves that cost sheet. And if we want more detail to that cost sheet, there will be more detail to it, if it doesn't answer all the questions. And that will be publicly posted too, so you can look that over. So help us help you. Help us cut down on the cost it's going to cost you. And then we'll come up with some kind of cost sheet, again, if this is approved, and bring it back, and that has to be voted on in a, in a separate motion. Silveira?
Yeah, I do like the idea of a cost sheet, and it's a question again for the city attorney, is, can I, when I make the motion to waive the first reading, and can I add that to the, to this, so that it comes back at the next meeting? Or would that be changing?
Just to clarify, I've already done a public hearing, and it will be coming back to you September sixteenth.
It's coming back anyway.
In a resolution, in the form of a resolution.
That's already included.
So a public hearing notice was published.
Okay.
So it'll be two separate actions you'll take at your next meeting.
Yeah. So what I'm asking, I guess, is, is, maybe I misspoke, is, we waive the first reading tonight, and then we introduce the ordinance.
Correct.
But if I wanted to add that that cost sheet be a part of what we get at the next meeting, am I changing it so much that I change the original public hearing? Or can I ask for that?
But you're going to provide that.
Yeah.
Yeah, the cost sheet's already going to be provided.
And I've done a second notice specifically just for the fees.
Okay. I'm sorry. I wasn't aware of that.
No, no problem.
Okay. Well, then if that's the case, Mr. Mayor, if there's no other questions or comments, I'll make a motion to waive the first reading of ordinance number, he closed the public hearing already.
Yeah, I closed the public hearing.
Sorry, let me start over again. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to waive the first reading of ordinance number eleven thirty-four, adding Article forty-one, Chapter three to Title Nine of the Los Banos Mini Code relating to special events on public property.
Hey, do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Motion by Silveira, second by Lewis, to approve, to waive the first reading of ordinance number one one three four. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Silveira?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to introduce ordinance number eleven thirty-four as read by title.
Mrs. Lewis?
I'll second the motion.
Okay. It's been motioned by Silveira, second by Lewis, for the introduction of ordinance number one one three four. And roll call vote.
Lewis?
Yes.
Silveira?
Yes.
Stonegrove?
Yes.
Valata?
Yes. Okay. Motion carried. Okay, we are going to take a ten-minute break, and so we'll be back at eight forty-eight, or around there. there.[219.95]
There are standards for the permit within the proposed ordinance, and I'm going to go through those for you. The sellers, first off, need to display all appropriate permits, licenses and certificates, and comply with laws, ordinances and regulations. This type of use is not permitted in any residential zones. There is an exception, though, that they are permitted in public parks, school grounds or church property, but they shall not operate on city-owned property or in the public right-of-way without prior written approval from the city manager first. Other standards for the permit are that they are limited to one day per week in any single location, that they must be maintained in a clean and sanitary condition, that they comply with all of the conditions of the permit, so those would be the conditions that the Community Economic Development Director have imposed, that they would remove all equipment and merchandise and other materials upon conclusion, and that they would operate on a paved surface, and then that they shall not offer for sale or otherwise distribute any alcoholic beverage, and that is in keeping with the definition of a certified farmer's market, that no amplified sound for any purpose, that they would operate a physically cohesive collection of vendors on a site, and these would be agricultural-type goods. And really, the purpose of this is so that we don't have a flea market-type use out there, that this is really geared towards agricultural uses, and that we not obstruct the safe flow of vehicular or pedestrian traffic, and the provisions for refuse, litter and sanitary facilities are arranged with the property owner. So with that, part of the ordinance's implementation, if the ordinance is passed today and the second reading is adopted in two weeks, it would take effect in 30 days after its final passage and adoption. So what this means for existing certified farmer's markets is that they would, after 30 days this ordinance is implemented, they would need to obtain a permit from the Community Economic Development Department to be in compliance with the ordinance. Their business license, depending on whenever that expires, that would expire at that time, but their permit would need to be issued, and they would need to be in compliance with the ordinance as it stands after it's adopted. So with that, that's basically the ordinance in a nutshell, and staff is recommending that the city council waive the first reading and introduce ordinance number 1135, adding Article 42 of Title IX, Chapter III of the Los Banas Municipal Code relating to certified farmer's markets. I'm here to answer any of your questions.
Hey, Mrs. Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Stacy, I have a couple of questions. Under definitions, Bullet Two and Bullet Three, Bullet Three speaks of the certified farmer's market certificate which specifies the location where the agriculture products are to be sold. So that's just basically outlining the location of sale, as I understand it, and maybe I'm not understanding it clearly. But Bullet Number Two, the certified farmer's market means a location approved by the county, Merced County Agriculture Commission where agriculture products are sold by producers or certified producers directly to the consumers. It kind of says the same thing a little bit as the other bullet, but I'm not quite sure if, you know, the caveat is "sold by producers" or "certified producers" directly to the public, and I don't know what the difference is.
And Mr. Vaughn, if you can step in there, I know you know the definitions a lot better than I do.
Well, these are actually defined by state law, and the certified farmer's market is right out of the code, the definition, and it, other than Merced County. But in order to be a certified farmer's market, you have to be first approved by the Agricultural Commission, and you've got to approve the location of the market.
Okay.
And then the third bullet point you're talking about is the actual certificate issued by the Agricultural Commission.
Stating where the location will be.
Right.
Okay.
But that location is subject to your zoning code and your zoning conditions.
Okay. So when it says "sold by producers" or "certified producers," is there something that's different about those two categories? I mean, what causes someone just to be a producer versus a certified producer?
There is a huge laundry list of regulations that the Agricultural Commissioner goes through to determine whether you're certified, and I don't know what all of those regulations are, but I believe the main one is you've got to be a producer of the product that you're selling. And they have, I believe they have a finite list of the type of agricultural products that are subject to a certified market, farmer's market certificate.
Okay. And maybe you can help me on...
So it's not for resale? There's limitations on employees of the vendor in terms of resale, and they want to make sure that the vendor isn't going to Save Mart buying a bunch of tomatoes, putting them out in the certified farmer's market as something that that vendor produced. So that's a whole separate process that the applicant has to go through before they even get to the city.
Okay, okay. The other one is under standards for permits. It's on the last page, because the page isn't numbered, it's the very last page, and it's Bullet Number Seven where it talks about shall operate as a physically cohesive collection. I'm not quite sure what this is referring to.
It's designed that it's a market and not a number of individual vendors spread out in a large location, so they're to operate as a market, as a cohesive group, like you would walk into a market, and they're to be separated from non-certified farmer's market sellers.
Okay, so that was the point, I think, that I was trying to make too.
So for instance, it separates the certified farmer's market producer and seller from Bill Vaughn who wants to sell his hobbyist activities.
Your muffins or your pothold...
Exactly.
Pot holders, things like that.
So as I understand it, the Food and Agricultural Code requires those actually to be physically separated.
Okay, and so...
And it's basically for the protection of the consumer, so the consumer knows that they're getting certified products and not something else, and then also that it's actually a farmer's product and not some type of craft.
So it also kind of lends to the fact that we don't have to worry about a flea market type situation being set up at our farmer's market?
The, a lot of the farmer's markets in the area, you will note, they'll have a farmer's market area, then they'll have kind of a separated area with other activities, and as long as those are physically separated, so if that was to happen here, that other activity would be subject to a special event permit.
Okay, all right.
So again, I think, as I read through the codes and the regulations, they're really designed to protect the consumer because I want to make sure that the products are coming from a certified vendor, not just mop, paw, kettle, decided to sell produce one day, and so they actually go through a process, and there's all kinds of rules and regulations regarding weights and measures and that kind of thing. But that's all on the Agricultural Commissioner. All we're doing is regulating the locations within the city that these can happen and the conditions under which they can locate in a particular area of the city. We don't want to get into figuring out if you're certified or not. That's what the certificate is supposed to do.
Right, right, okay. I was just trying to differentiate to see if, you know, that we had some knowledge about what was certified and what was not, so I guess you can go to the Department of Agriculture and look it up there under their codes if I have any further questions and all that. Thank you.
Why the paved surface?
The paved surface really came about from a safety perspective, as well as just looking at the location now at the park, and being able to rotate through when it's there every, if an event is there every day as it's been, then we kind of have some spots in the park that we were having issues with, but that was a recommendation that we saw on, well, it was pulled from other cities that we saw, as well as a recommendation from Planning Commission.
Okay, okay. Ms. Silbera?
I guess, to me, the paved surface part, it kind of contradicts itself when we talk about, in part of the bullet points that you, or the points that you had made earlier, one of the exceptions is that you can have it at a public park. Well, I mean, so you're saying you can have it at a public park in one spot, but now you're saying you can only have it in a paved area. Most parks are grass and stuff like that. I mean, they have parking lots, I guess? And so, to me, by putting that stipulation in there, you've made, you basically have made Pacheco Park not a viable space for any kind of farmer's market, because when you start to get to the paved surface, now you've taken all your parking area away. And then one of the regulations is that you have to, you can't impede traffic and traffic flows and all that, so I just, I'm not comfortable with that part of it, of that at all. So that's all I have for now.
Mr. Vaughn?
That may have been too general. I think what the Planning Commission was looking at is they didn't want it to be on an unimproved surface, so that someone has an unimproved lot in town, and all of a sudden a bunch of tents show up with a farmer's market, want something improved, and I don't know if there's a big difference between, there is in terms of the definitions, but in terms of the city's interest in it being on lawn versus a paved surface, I think there is an interest that it not be on a totally undeveloped surface that's going to kick up dust and create all kinds of other issues such as that. So I don't know that the paved surface is a big issue. I think a lot of farmer's markets are on streets, they are in parking lots, and they're, I don't know that it's that usual that they're on unpaved surfaces, but that's, I don't think that's a big, was a big issue with the Planning Commission. Because these can happen on private property as well as public property, keep in mind, so if you recall, when we were having our mobile vendor discussion, we don't want a mobile vendor to be on an unimproved parcel of property for various reasons. It's kind of the same, same kind of idea. It does create some environmental concerns in terms of dust and such.
So would it be safe in making the recommendation that it be changed from paved surface to unimproved surface?
Could be if you're specifically thinking about a grass surface being a park. I'm trying to think of any private property that would be big enough for a farmer's market that would have a grass surface, but you, we could come up with something paved or improved surface.
Okay, thank you.
But then, if we have an improved surface, then is our due diligence to go inspect that surface to make sure that it's safe for people to then be at a farmer's market? Because I'm thinking of chuck holes, I'm thinking of, you know, gopher holes, I'm thinking of things that someone could trip on, and then the city approves that site, and someone gets hurt. I mean, on a paved surface, that's not going to happen.
In terms of approving a site on a piece of private property, the city would have no liability, and the city is requiring liability insurance and indemnity agreements. On the city's public property, it's a little dicier if you're approving a use on lawn that's an unsafe surface, and you know that it's unsafe, there could be some liability there on the part of the city. So I don't know how dangerous a lawn surface is. It was my understanding, the lawn issue, it was more of a maintenance issue, in that usually these farmer's markets are weekly for a period of time, and they can be tough on a lawn surface that the city's trying to keep up in a time when there's hardly any water to keep them up, so I think that was part of the consideration that the Planning Commission went into.
Okay. Any other questions before I open up the public hearing? Okay. I will now open the public hearing to receive comment and ordinance number 1135, so anyone who wishes to speak.
Hello, my name's Will Reyes. I'm the owner of Willie B's Honey and Produce. I was born and raised in Los Banas. For the past, for the past three years, I've been selling in the park. For the past year and a half, I've been permitted by the city to sell year-round. I sell honey, nuts, fruits and vegetables on the grass at Pacheco Park around every Saturday and Sunday, occasionally on Mondays, depending on if it's a holiday or if I have a surplus of produce, because that is the only outlet I have to sell my product. I have, as a certified grower, I only sell what I grow and/or what my bees produce. I have a business license from the City of Los Banas and a permit through the Merced County Commissioner certifying that I grow everything that I sell at Willie B's Farmer's Market. More recently, I acquired the certification to accept WIC farmer's market dollars, which are provided for women with infant children to shop for fresh fruits and vegetables. That's through the State of California, and I also, I also received the permit through Merced County that allows me to invite other vendors to sell at my market at 905 East Pacheco. In the near future, I hope to have a few, a few local growers join me in my market. Currently, I'm the only one. The ordinance sounds like a great idea. I agree with it completely. There are two small issues that I currently have with what I've been doing at the Pacheco Park for the past year and a half. One is the requirement to be on a paved surface. The grass, the grass is nice, and the tents, I don't know if you guys know, but easy-up tents fly away real easily, and this is a windy town. We peg them down in the grass, and it's really safe that way. The second, the second issue that I have is the one-day-per-week limitation, and the issue with that is everything that I produce, this is the only outlet for my sale as of right now. So when I have weeks or months of high production, I want to sell what I have. I always have honey, but fruits and vegetables come and go year-round, and I was hoping to continue selling Saturdays and Sundays, and as well as on a holiday weekend, like Labor Day weekend, I would like to sell Monday as well. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Not seeing or hearing anyone, I will now close the public hearing and bring it back to council level. Silbera?
Stacy, so, or Mr. Vaughn, so what was the Planning Commission's reasoning behind the one-day-per-week in any single location?
Was really looking at what other cities do in certified farmer's markets, how they're operated, also looking at the circuit in the Central Valley. From what we understand and talking to other mobile vendors, but not talking to Will, was that they have their own circuit Thursdays, they're in, say, Gustine, for instance, Turlock, they're, or Friday, they're maybe in Turlock or someplace else, and they kind of have their circuit once a day per the week that they visit, and so that's how we came upon that one day a week. Mr. Vaughn can add to that?
Yes. Mr. Vaughn?
I think part of the consideration was, I think the city was anticipating that a farmer's market might also entail a street closure, and so I think the discussion was that a one-day street closure every Thursday, for instance, evening for six or eight months was, was what the city wanted to do in terms of shutting down a street. And in terms of the park, it's just a question of usage of the park. Are we going to dedicate three days a week to a particular portion of the park to one person to sell commercial items? And so the thought was, we wanted to encourage farmer's markets, but we didn't want to turn public property into a commercial enterprise for the sale of items. You could, one of the alternatives would be, if you wanted to extend the number of days, you could have more days on private property, for instance, because you don't have those types of issues. So if someone wanted to have a farmer's market in a parking lot of a private property, they could do that, and I'm not sure that the one-day limitation is that relevant to what the city's concerns were. So it was basically street closures and use of public facilities and public parks to dedicate to one enterprise for more than once a week.
So I guess my concern with that one is, is, as I get it, you know, life is about change, and things are changing all the time, but he's been, he's been permitted to operate there for the last year and a half to two years, and now we're going to a one-day-per-week, and I get, you know, I'm really, like, I think the insurance part of it's important, it holds the city harmless with all those things. I think that there's a really, a lot of good things that are coming out of this ordinance, but I just feel like this is, my opinion only, okay, but I feel like now this is more of a, this ordinance is changing in order to stop one particular person from being at the park. That's the feeling that I get from it.
Well, let me address that, because when Mr. Shasky had the farmer's market, it was one day a week, and I think Mr. Reyes was part of that. When Mr. Shasky left, Mr. Reyes somehow stayed around, and I don't know that he's actually permitted, he's got a business license, but he hasn't gone through any permitting process to allow him to do what he's doing. He's been allowed to do it, he's just been allowed to do it. I don't have the history as to why he's been allowed to do it, but it's kind of morphed from an organized farmer's market of a number of vendors together, organized by an operator, to now one vendor, and that one day, I think it was Saturday morning, has morphed into Sunday and Monday if it's a holiday, and I don't even think the location, I don't even know if it's the same location in the park. There's actually no regulation in terms of what anyone's doing in that park in terms of a farmer's market, and that's what this is attempting to do.
And I think that...
So I just want to clear, I don't, I don't think there has been a permit issued for this, for this activity. It just kind of, over time, it's been allowed, but it did start with an actual formal process with Mr. Shasky, and once he stopped doing it, it kind of has morphed into this other thing.
And then maybe on my part was a poor choice of words when I said permitted, I meant he was allowed to, was permitted to, allowed, not necessarily that he had a permit, because I don't know that to be factual or not.
I have a comment to make?
Um, okay.
As far as the permit goes?
I have all the required permits, and I also, through the, not the city, but through the Commissioner, the address of 905 East Pacheco was certified, so I can sell there.
Typically, if someone wanted to use a public property like a park, they would get an admin permit to do that. I clearly, I'm not, I'm not attacking him or anything, I'm just saying that. There was no process in place after Mr. Shasky left to deal with this issue, but if Bill Vaughn wanted to go into the park and sell cassette tapes or whatever, there's no process for dealing that, other than an admin permit. As far as I know, there's no admin permit that's been dealt with for this activity in the park. It's just kind of been allowed, again, because it kind of was an offshoot of the original farmer's market, so I don't think, certainly in drafting this and helping staff, there was no motive to single out anything. It was to deal with public property in a way that seemed to be appropriate, and that is a one-day-every-week farmer's market seemed to be appropriate on public property. Now, if you don't think that's appropriate, we certainly aren't the decision-makers, you can do what you want. It may be appropriate for certain parts of, certain public properties. I'm not sure that, for instance, a business would appreciate a farmer's market three days a week in front of their business on the street, and that was kind of one of the, one of the ideas was, this is public property, it's a little bit different than a business happening on private property, so you probably have a lot more leeway in terms of this happening on private property in terms of the number of days that it operates. I think they're all over the board. So you could make a distinction between public property and private property if you wanted. You could, you could, we could somehow have a little bit more lenient language here. It just seemed like the one-day was what we wanted, what the staff was looking at doing for the use of public property.
Very good. That's all I have for right this second. Thank you.
Mrs. Stonehill?
Thank you. I appreciate staff for bringing this ordinance and all the ordinances we're looking at tonight to kind of get some stuff into our code so that we can start having a policy for dealing with these types of things and making sure that we're treating everyone equally. I think that farmer's markets are a great service to the community. Mr. Reyes's farmer's market is the only farmer's market that I've seen operate in Los Banas for the past year or so, and I don't know, I think the community benefits from it. I think we should be doing what we can to encourage these types of activities instead of discouraging them. When I read the staff report, the discussion about the paved surfaces, I did kind of think that was a little bit arbitrary, too, so I would be interested in modifying that provision. In regard to the comment about the potholes possibly in the grass and parks, I think the city assumes some liability for that anyways, in a park, that's our property. And, you know, the issue, if what the issue was with the one-day-per-week in a single location was if, in respect to street closures, maybe we could change that language a little bit to say, you know, if it's going to, it's going to be a farmer's market that requires a street closure, we could do that, you know, once a week or something like that. But if it's not going to require a street closure, then we could allow it to stay open two days or three days or whatever council decides. Those are just my thoughts. It seemed like kind of minor things that we could tweak in order to keep something valuable in our community.
Good. Mrs. Lewis?
Thank you. And Mr. Reyes, you know, thank you for your products that you sell and that you've got your certification license, but typically in the cities that I've visited, farmer's markets are one day a week. I think the very first farmer's market that I ever attended and purchased from regularly was in San Jose. It's a fairly large farmer's market on Fridays, but it only operates from May through September, like the previous one that we had. There's a farmer's market in Gustine, and I believe it only operates certain times of the year, once a week. There's a farmer's market in Merced that just relocated, and they only operate certain times of the year, once a week. I don't know that farmer's markets were intended to be like an outdoor grocery store, that they were intended to be a situation where you can go and get some really nice produce once a week on a particular day of the week. And there may be other farmer's markets out there that are more than one day a week, but it just kind of takes away for me the uniqueness of a farmer's market when you're operating three, four, five days a week and then on holidays. It just doesn't, to me, it doesn't lend to what a farmer's market is trying to do. But, you know, in regards to the surface, I think maybe, you know, just tweaking the word to, what was the word that you were wanting? Improved surface, yeah, that might be a better choice, and, because if it's improved, that means that, you know, the surface is viable for anybody to walk on or drive on, it's not just dirt out there. But I would, I would like to see a farmer's market remain once a week. I'm hoping that this farmer's market is going to grow where there's just more than one vendor out there selling their product that we can get back to, you know, maybe four, five, six vendors, and it ends up growing from there. But I think you probably... But I think you probably would be hard-pressed to find other people who want to participate in farmer's markets to be available more than once a week, because they do travel from, it's kind of almost like a, for lack of words, like a circus, you know? They go from one city to another, and they sell their products to the various people in our communities here in the valley. So that, that's kind of my opinion about it. It's, it's a really wonderful thing. I would love to see our farmer's market grow to be a large farmer's market where people can get fresh produce right out of the, you know, a grown area that the certifier has grown. And especially, I have a love for tomatoes, and I'd love to have some really good grown tomatoes that don't taste like water. So, but that, that's just, again, one person's opinion. I think farmer's markets should be one day a week, and they should be for a span period of time, because you only have produce that grows here in California for a certain period of time and not year-round. Thank you.
Well, for me, it's still a matter of fairness. And if the unpaved or improved surfaces, that opens up more surfaces in town, if that's what we're talking about, that could have a farmer's market. And I worry about that, because there are people that are paying for, and I'll lead into this, there are people that are paying for storefronts and people who sell vegetables that have overhead. And that leads into the more than one day a week for me. And I think, well, you're close to becoming a business. And that's kind of the way I see it. You're providing a service, but you're providing a service that basically is, a farmer's market is one day a week, but doing it two or three days a week is, is more like, like a business that needs a storefront or some kind of permanent shelter. And I worry that the city's not in the, in the process of being a business rental facility. I mean, helping out with a, with a surface that, or helping out with, with something that's a novelty once, one day a week is, is okay with me. But when people are almost transitioning into becoming a, a full-time or part-time business, you know, I see the same thing. We're open, my shop is open 20 hours a week, and, and I have a permanent storefront. And we worked into that and finally decided that's what we want to do. But the improved surface, if the council decides to do that, what kind of improved surface are you requiring? And then I'd like to know which surfaces in town or which places in town would be, would be eligible to have a farmer's market, either private or public. And, and I see a, I see a real problem there, because if people wanted to locate a tent near a business that was, was of the same business or like business, I see some, some problem. And then does that build, does that spill over into the, the non-certified area of allowing people to then have co-mingling of, of businesses on the site? Would we have to allow that, too? And would we have to allow that more than one day?
Well, certified farmer's markets are very unique in the requirements that they have to meet in order to be certified. So I think we are a farming community, and we should be encouraging, this is not the lawyer talking, but we should be encouraging produce and agricultural products. The, the balance you're trying to strike is what is appropriate on, for instance, public property versus private property? What's appropriate in terms of the use of Pacheco Park? Is it appropriate for a business to be there five days a week, seven days a week, one day a week? Those kinds of things. Because frankly, a certified farmer's market is a business. It's just a very unique, specialized type of business. I think there's, maybe you could find a distinction in the number of days in terms of the location, whether it's a public location or a private location, kind of what Ms. Stonegrove was saying. You know, we don't want to close down a public street for five days because someone wants to have a certified farmer's market. So the idea behind the one-day-a-week was just to kind of set the bar, and that's what it was going to be. As far as locations and competition, I don't know that it's appropriate to determine that we don't want to have a certified farmer's market outdoors, because it might compete with a grocery store or something, for instance. But in effect, it is kind of an outdoor business, and it is a unique business in terms of its not being permanent. So it does have to meet criteria that, in order to be in a parking lot. I mean, the only, really, the only areas I can think of that are non-public property would be a parking lot, a church, a school, or a park. And then the private, the private areas are going to be limited to a parking lot or actually an indoor farmer's market. So as we talk about this one-day limitation, I think if you have, are having problems with that, I think you can draw distinctions between the limitation in terms of the location, public versus private, that kind of thing. Do you want a farmer's market taking up a parking lot in the middle of downtown five days a week? Probably not. Now, that's why I think it's very common to see the limitations in terms of the number of days, because they are kind of a transitory type of business. They're not, I don't think they're intended to be a permanent outdoor business. I don't think that's what we...
That's my point.
And I don't think that's what the City Planning Commission is supporting as a permanent outdoor business, supporting the idea of a farmer's market that's an occasional bit. When I say permanent, I mean more than one or two days a week, kind of thing. So those are the things you gotta kind of weigh together in the promotion of a certified farmer's market and what they provide for the community versus what's good for the neighborhood that they locate in as well.
Stacy, do we charge to use the park?
We typically charge for all other events. Pacheco Park, we do. We have a lease agreement, correct, for the fenced area? So say if it was like Father's Day in the park or Mother's Day in the park, that type of event?
We charge for organized activities.
Okay. So do we charge for this activity?
We do not.
No.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Again, those are just my comments. So, okay, Mrs. Soler?
Yeah. So Stacy or Mr. Vaughn says part of it, one of the bullet points here, it says the operation shall be limited to one day per week in any single location. So the way that I read that, and tell me if I'm wrong, I could have seven farmer's markets as long as I moved it every day?
That's true.
So I just, I think, you know, I think we're, we can, we can play a lot of what-ifs and whatnot, but I think the compromise is two days a week. I think that, that two days a week and then, and I get it, you sell on the weekends, and if it's a holiday weekend, well, then maybe you sell on Sunday and Monday instead of Saturday and Sunday. And I think that, at least for me, that that's a fair enough compromise. And then you don't get into the three days a week, where now it's something that's permanent. You know, that's something that I could live with. And so if there aren't any other questions...
Just so it's clear, we try to make the location to be within the purview of the city manager, so that if at some time, Pacheco Park or whatever street isn't an appropriate place for a farmer's market, that it can be dealt with. Because it is, again, it is public property. And either we gotta have some very clear rules on utilization of our parks and streets. Don't have very clear ordinance right now on the utilization of the parks, and that's part of what we're trying to do here. So again, we're kind of trying to balance, is it appropriate to have this particular activity? Because we're talking about farmers markets today, more than one day or two days a week every, every week for 50, 52 weeks out of the year. That's, is that how you want to utilize Pacheco Park? It is an annual permit, and I think we've tried to leave enough discretion that the city manager's office could determine that, you know, that's, that's not really where we want a farmer's market in the future. So we want to be careful that we're not entitling public property so that someone thinks I have a particular park or a particular street, and that's my business location forever. Because it's not, it's a, it's a one-year permit that you may not have it next year.
And I mean, that's clearly stated in the, in...
Right. And someone may come with a 20-person farmer's market, that the city may rather have that at that location than a three-person farmer's market, for instance. It doesn't follow through with private property. You know, you can, as long as you can meet the criteria, you can locate on private property.
So, but all the locations are, have to be approved by the city manager's office?
Right. Public locations.
All the public locations.
The private locations have to go through a process where they're going to kind of go through this permitting process as well, but they're going to look closer at the location.
And so, and that is approved annually with that annual permit, correct?
Correct. And that was the idea of limiting the number of days, too, is because it's a 12-month kind of thing. It's not just one day, one day in the year that you're going to put up a farmer's market. It's going to be kind of a continuous thing.
And you had, you had a second item that was improved surface. Could we get some clarity on that one?
I was going to... I mean, I, I don't think that's a big issue in terms of making that change.
So I see, I can see the mayor's computer screen over there, and I see that everyone's lit up. So before I make a motion, I want everybody...
Although I will say that you, you're requiring your mobile vendors to be on a paved surface, which this is very similar to a mobile vendor. This is, matter of fact, this could meet the definition of a mobile vendor, because it's kind of a movable, a movable storefront. So not that I'm saying you got to treat them the same, it's just that there were some issues there about paved surfaces and what you were going to have around a farmer's market. We're going to try to deal with those through the conditions of approval, in terms of signage, where people will park, where the placement will be, the hours, those kind of things all come with the permit.
Yeah, I, I, in my mind, I differ from, you know, farm-to-table vendors and farmer's market than I do in like, you know, the cupcake lady or...
Yeah. I mean, that's fair distinction.
Yeah. So I'll, I'll reserve my motion for when the rest of the councils have a chance to...
So right now, I have only on improved surface for that part of the, that's the one change that, that's been thrown up there. And then I, I don't hear any consensus on the daily, the day...
Stacy, why don't you give us your thoughts on use of public property and what you're thinking with this ordinance?
I think, no, she's got a few other...
Okay.
On, on the first bullet, where it says operations shall be limited to one day per week at a single location, I would like to recommend that we just take out the words "in a single location." You know, having a farmer's market one day a week is something that people kind of depend on, to go to the farmer's market. But if somebody decides, well, you know, I want to, I want to do it on a Sunday and a Monday holiday, and then, you know, the following week I'm going to do it on this day. It's like, how does your public know what you're going to be doing? The idea of a farmer's market is to be there on the one day a week so that people know that you're going to be there. And it is, it's like, that's almost like transient hours, where you, who's, who do you go to to find out where you're going to be on a certain day of the week? So at a single location, you know, I didn't catch that one, but I, I think that needs to be eliminated. If, if we're looking at having a farmer's market and having it one day a week, then it can't be at multiple locations and allowing that loophole to be there so that people can just pull a permit for a different location one day a week. That, that's, that's my biggest thing. And I, you know, I can't say enough to just say that I would be in favor of just a one-day-a-week farmer's market. That's typical, that's what people expect. And Mr. Reyes has been allowed to operate, as I'm understanding today, without a permit at the park for several days during the week. But this is why we're drafting these ordinances, not to point, again, the finger at you or anyone else in particular, but to narrow it down so that there is a clear definition about what the city is expecting as this type of business moves forward.
If I could comment on the single location, I think it presupposes that we may want a farmer's mark, or we may want to allow a farmer's market vendor to move from one location to the other. I mean, it's very common in a big city. Los Banos is not geographically huge, but I can envision where a farmer's market in one location, say on the north side of town, would not preclude a farmer's market from occurring on the south side of town at a different location for one day. So that's the idea of the single location language is that I don't anticipate, well, this is not anticipating or presupposing, presupposing that there's only going to be one farmer's market in the city of Los Banos. This is coming up with a process to permit anyone who's got a certificate to locate in Los Banos in a manner that's somewhat controlled by this ordinance, whether it be private or public property. So that, that's a single location thing. So I, there was some thought given to it in that the city may get large enough at some time where you may want a farmer's market at two different locations on different days, just one day at a time, kind of thing. And I don't think we anticipated someone pulling seven permits so that they could go to seven different locations on separate, seven days.
That's what I heard you say.
Wait, wait, I want to, hang on just one minute.
I think you asked a question, and anything's possible, yes, someone could do that, but that's not what we're anticipating or intending this ordinance to allow.
Okay. The only reason I'm bringing it up is because I wanted it clear, so that it may not be Mr. Reyes, it may be somebody else that comes in and says, well, it says a single location per week, and take the opportunity to be able to do something like that. So when, when you and Stacy agree that, yes, it could be more than one location, a different location, any, any different day of the week or seven days a week, then that's when the red flag came up for me.
And keep in mind that it can't be in a residential district unless it's on a church property or school property.
That's different. I'm thinking more public property.
So in terms of public property, the, the issue there was to give the city manager the discretion to allow it or not allow it on public property. And so even if you meet all the criteria, the city manager could determine that. No, we don't want five farmer's markets, one each day, at Pacheco Park in the same place, Monday through Friday. So it leaves it to the discretion of the city manager in terms of public property.
Okay.
No certified farmer's market shall operate on city-owned property or in the public right-of-way without the fire written approval from the office of the city manager. So that was kind of designed to kind of make sure that what we're, we're doing here makes sense in terms of encouraging farmer's markets, but not abusing public property for, to have a farmer's market.
Some of the comments that were made is, you know, if we allow a surface, an improved surface, that opens up a number of locations in town that, that wouldn't have been opened up under the previous definition, because it would, wouldn't be a paved surface. And then if we're saying that on an improved surface, and we're saying two days a week, are we taking the city manager out of this? Because obviously, the way this ordinance was written, it wasn't written to allow, and I'm just stating what it is, it wasn't written to allow vendors at Pacheco Park. So here we are talking about one thing, then I think if you're doing that, you have to recommend that the city manager be taking out of this, taken out of this process. So you have to think about that. Because if you, you say improved surface and that passes, and you say more than two or three days a week, then you're saying the city manager can still say no? can still say no? So, you're taking the premise of this original ordinance, and now you've taken it apart to where it's not something that met the original intent. So...
Again, I'm seeing a distinction between public property and private property that maybe the ordinance doesn't...
But he still has the final say.
Only on public...
Public property. Public property. So, and the whole question here, let's be honest, it's about Pacheco Park. It's not about anything else.
Now, again, the idea was if an applicant came and said, "I want my farmer's market to be at a location, at a street location on public property. That's where I want it to be. I meet all of the other criteria." We wanted to give the city manager to say, "Wait a minute. You can't have a farmer's market at Sixth and J at 3:00 to 7:00, five days a week. You can't. It's public property." So, we wanted to be able to give the city manager's office the ability to kind of weigh the location when it's on public property. But when it's on private property, if it meets the criteria, then we don't want to be legislating what someone can do on private property. It's the public property that we wanted to be able to have some discretion. Maybe we have 20 farmer's markets at Pacheco Park, but there's got to be some mechanism, some authority to say, "No, we like one farmer's market at Pacheco Park," or "No farmer's market." And that is what we vested in the city manager's office to try to deal with.
Okay, but the way the ordinance was written basically said that staff came up with, and the planning commission came up with one day, and they came and they talked about paved surfaces. So, if that's the case, and it was paved surfaces, the city manager was not going to approve something at Pacheco Park. Obviously, you had a reason to say that they didn't want a vendor at Pacheco Park. So, if we say improved surfaces, and we say two or three days a week, and he says no...
Yeah, I think the paved surfaces maybe was just the wrong terminology to use.
Okay.
I think we kind of...
That's still not my point. That's still not my point. Will he still have final say as to whether it's put on that piece of property or not?
As to whether it's on public property, yes.
Yes. Okay. Unless the council wants to take that out, because he's obviously saying he doesn't want someone there.
The idea was that this didn't have to come to the city council every time someone...
Correct. Correct.
Applied for a certified farmer's market.
Yeah, but that's not my point. That's not my point. Mr. Stonegrove?
Thank you. I guess I don't see the harm in allowing the farmer's market to be open two days a week in the same location. I don't know. I just think it's an asset to our community. We have an operator that's providing a service to the community. We talk a lot about, as a council, being business-friendly. We talk about being an agricultural community and promoting agriculture and all these jobs that are tied to agriculture. And sometimes I think the conversation is leading towards a way that is contradicting that. We just, two or three items ago this evening, we had to go back and make a correction that collectively as a council, an action that we took a year ago that placed an undue or unreasonable restriction on a business. And we corrected that tonight. So, again, and I said that before when we were talking about me, Barrio, I don't want to have to, I don't want to make that same mistake again. We have someone that's providing a service for our community in a location. He's been operating there for four years. With, it's my understanding, what he believes has been the correct process in getting business license and the permits and the certifications that, to his knowledge, he's believed he has to have. If we, you know, he doesn't have the permits that we think he should have, because we don't have an ordinance that allows those permits, that's kind of our responsibility, I think, in my opinion. So, you know, in an ideal world, yes, maybe we, you know, have this perfect picture of what a farmer's market looks like in San Jose, and it's one day a week in this location. I don't want to put this restriction on the one farmer's market that we have and then lose it and not have any.
If I may make a suggestion, is there, Stacy, do you kind of get the drift of what everybody's talking about?
With the words "no more than two days per week," would that be appropriate to give somebody the discretion to say, "That location, not two days a week, but one day" kind of thing? Is that, is that language and discretion that you're okay with, as opposed to saying, "If you meet all the criteria, you absolutely get it, two days a week," as opposed to "not more than two days a week"?
I was going to suggest, Stacy, that we table this, and it's up to the council. And, oh, it's on? Mine's not on? My mic's on. Yeah. I was just going to suggest that we table this, and you've listened to all the discussion. Talk to the city manager, talk to staff, and come up with some other language and bring that back to us. Because tonight, there, I brought up issues, Mrs. Lewis has brought up issues, Mrs. Silvera, and Mrs. Stonegrove has brought up issues. And I certainly am not ready to vote, and I won't. I won't vote yes, because I want to see all the language in writing as to what we're going to bring back and what we're going to approve, and see another draft with all the information. And then, if the city manager is still going to be in the mix to approve or not to approve. So, that's my suggestion.
Let me, I think I've been strangely quiet tonight, but I think I've got a handle on this one. About a year ago, the assignment was to staff, "Go research farmer's markets, because we don't have a system in place to address this." So, staff in the city attorney went out and did the research, came back and said, "Here's a farmer's market. Here's how they do in other communities. We're going to cut, paste, modify. This one works for us." I've got two folks up here saying, "That's a great idea. Let's go down this path." And I've got two are saying, "We got a gentleman here that's providing a service, a really good product, and he's been doing it for a long time. Under the guise that he's doing the right thing." And yes, we dropped the ball. Three, four years ago, remember it was, whenever the Chaski era, you know, and the Willarreus era, whenever that started, yeah, the ball got dropped. I think I'm right so far. So, what I'm hearing is, we're stuck here right now at 2-2. Why don't we call a timeout? Stacy, Bill, and I'll huddle up. I would like Will Reyes, if you can, we'll get you down here to talk to you also, because I've got a couple ideas for you and see what you're interested in, if you're interested in any of those ideas. And then, if we can, we can come back in two weeks?
Yeah.
Does that work for you? You're not due until October 7th, so we're going to keep moving this one along, because we can't lose you. We need you for part of this discussion. But I think that's where we're at. Is that a good summation of the last hour and 15 minutes, 20 minutes? Is that fine with everyone? For now?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm going to make a motion to table...
It would be to continue the public hearing and the item to whatever that dates.
All right. I'm going to make a motion to continue item, item D1, ordinance number 1135, adding Article 42, Chapter 3, to Title IX of the Los Banos Municipal Code relating to a certified farmer's market, and to continue the public hearing to the...
September 16th.
September 16th.
16th.
And I'll make that motion. Do I have a second? Let me click all these mics off here, and then you can, someone can chime in if you want to. All right. Mr. Silvera?
Mr. Mayor, I will second that motion.
Okay. It's been motioned by Valalta, seconded by Silvera, to continue item D1 to September 16th, and also continue the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? None. Carried. All right. Does someone wake Mr. Freya up?
Chief, come on.
Please, we haven't been here this late since 2008.
You don't have to stay.
It's getting late. We understand.
You're more than welcome to.
Yeah, it's okay. Yeah.
We're here to meet you.
Dennis, you miss it.
What's that? Your presentation? Is that okay with you?
Wait a minute. Are we...
Well, we get a chance. We still got one, one more public hearing, and then Stacy's presentation. You want to push Stacy's presentation to the 16th? We're getting late, and it could...
Yeah, we can do that.
She's got a lot to say.
Let's do that. Okay.
She does.
All right. Do I need a motion for that?
Do what? I'm sorry.
Stacy's presentation, Community and Economic Development Presentation, item nine?
Could we wait until Mr. Freya?
Okay. We have to find Mr. Freya. All right. We found Mr. Freya, and we're ready to begin. Okay. I have a request for item nine, Community and Economic Development Presentation. Mr. Vaughn, do we need a motion to...
Continue that?
To continue that item till September 16?
Yes, you do.
Okay. Could I please have a motion for item nine to continue it to September, please don't all bring in at once here, okay? Mrs. Lewis?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to continue item number nine, the Community and Economic Development Presentation.
Okay, to September...
To September 16th.
16th.
16th. Do I have a second? Mr. Freya?
I'll second that motion. You have something to do here.
Thank you. Motion by Lewis, seconded by Freya, to continue item nine, Community and Economic Development Presentation, to September 16th. Thank you. All right, let's go on to ordinance number 1136, adding Article 43, Chapter 3, to Title IX of the Los Banos Municipal Code relating to residential neighborhood block parties. And this is a first reading and introduction, and let's go to Senior Planner Elms for a staff report.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. Okay, so how we came about with this particular ordinance was actually, in the discussion, this morphed from the special events ordinance and really our processes within the city and how we regulate and permit certain events. So, our current way that we permit block parties is that currently, there's no uniform process. And as you kind of get the theme tonight, what we're doing is a lot of housekeeping. We have a lot of permits or types of events that we have go on within the city without any regulation. So, that's what we're proposing for you tonight, is a uniform process. And this would only be for those types of neighborhood block parties that require a temporary closure of residential neighborhood streets. So, the proposed ordinance before you defines block party, what that is. And if you meet that definition, then you would be required to obtain a block party permit. And the application submittal would need to be not less than 21 days and no more than 90 days before the event. And there would be regulations and conditions. The applicant would be required to sign an indemnity agreement, obtain liability insurance, because they would be on the public right-of-way, and then they have the ability to appeal to the planning commission. So, the regulations and conditions, just to go through some of them, they will not be issued on major streets, arterial streets, thoroughfare streets, or collector's streets, bus routes, streets not entirely within the city limits, or streets that provide major access to a subdivision, church, park, fire station, community center, or business, or prevents proper public safety. And the purpose of this is that we really wanted to think what could possibly go wrong in this type of situation on a block party. And we didn't want, on, say, a major street like Cardoza or Stonewood, for there to be closure in the middle of the street and then public safety not be able to get there. Another example that we discussed at a staff level was using bluff drive, for instance. If it's insurance, if you, depending on where that block party was located, public safety would have to go all the way around Crest Hills and go through Pioneer Road to get to a certain area of bluff drive if there was an emergency happening. So, we really wanted to think about certain areas in town and what needs to be regulated. Also, not permitted within, or more than a quarter mile in length. So, those types of events need to be less than a quarter mile. Block parties should only be barricaded between intersections, and this would be so that a four-lane intersection would remain open to traffic. No permit would be granted without written consent of at least one adult. No permitted block party would be during the hours of 10:00 PM and 8:00 AM, and no longer than 10 hours in duration. And then, the permittee must be present at all times, and there must be adult supervision at all times. So, that's written within the regulations and conditions. Also, we put within the ordinance that it is not open to the general public and no admission or advertising allowed. We didn't just want this to be an event open to everybody in the general public. This needed to be for the occupants of that street or family. It didn't need to include all the 37,000 people of Los Banos. The donations must be done separately and not collected on the day of the block party, because we wanted to distinguish that no admission would be required. We didn't want there to be confusion that they were also taking donations that day, which could be seen as paying admission. So, any collection of money would need to be done, not on the day of the event. And the permittee responsible for complying, they would need to be responsible for complying with the Norris Ordinance regarding amplified music or disruption of public peace. Really, in these types of events, probably the only complaint I would think that the police department gets may be due to noise. Although, in speaking to the chief, these events are never any problem, correct, chief? You had said that as long as they have a permit, they go through the regulations, that they are usually fine. So, we typically don't have a problem with that. But also, that no fireworks are permitted, including safe and sane on city property, except as specifically approved by the Los Banos Fire Department as a part of the permit. And this is actually an issue that the planning commission dissected and discussed quite heavily during their public hearing process. And originally, what we had proposed was that there would be no fireworks permitted whatsoever. But in discussions with the planning commission, they did feel that as long as it was specifically approved by the Los Banos Fire Department, that it could be okay. The way that the fire ordinance for fireworks is written now for the safe and sane fireworks, they are allowed in conjunction with a block party as approved by the city council. And the planning commission felt that the fire chief, the fire department should have the authority to approve that or not, as long as they specifically stated within a site plan where those safe and sane fireworks would be located. So, that was the recommendation that we're bringing before you tonight. Second, that the minimum length needs to be a 12-foot wide lane left open along the entire length of the street for emergency vehicle access, so there couldn't be any tables, chairs, canopies, any of those sorts of things blocking public safety. Ingress and egress for every residence must be maintained. No sale of alcohol and no consumption on public property, and that's per city ordinances. No cooking appliances with open flame under canopies. And the permittee would be responsible for cleanup immediately following the conclusion of the event. Also, the proposed ordinance, the applicant, as I had stated previously, must sign an indemnity agreement. This is so, really is something that we are enforcing. This is, um, so really is something that we are enforcing with, uh, because it's required before our risk management authority. This is something that we are creating with all these ordinances. If it's on public property, they must sign an indemnity agreement, and then they must obtain liability insurance of at least $1 million. And they need to list the city as an additional insured under their coverage. So, with that, staff is recommending that we, that the City Council waive the first reading and introduce ordinance number 1136, adding Article 43 of Title 9, Chapter 3 of the Los Angeles Municipal Code relating to block parties. And that concludes my presentation.
Stacy? It says, "No fireworks are permitted, including safe and sane on city property." Then down it says, uh, "The applicant will be required to provide a site plan showing the exact location in the street." Where the sa... Is the street city property?
Yes, but it's except as approved by the Fire Department. So, there's a sentence in between that, that... Let me read you what...
No. Okay. But I, I mean, I mean, it says, "No fireworks are permitted..."
Including safe and sane on city property.
On city property.
Including streets and sidewalks.
Including streets and sidewalks.
Except as specifically approved by the Fire Department. As a part of the block party permit.
Right.
So, if it's approved, then the applicant would be required to provide a site plan. Prior to the approval, they need to show us a site plan. This is in order for the Fire Department to determine whether they can approve it or not, specifying the exact location of the safe and sane fireworks.
Yeah, go ahead.
That, that's specifically the language in our fire code now, is that you're not permitted to shoot off any type of fireworks, safe and sane or otherwise, on city property unless it's in conjunction with the block party with the permission of the Fire Department. So, that's what that's doing. So, anywhere else in the city other than a block party shouldn't be shooting off fireworks on the street or sidewalks.
Okay. And during the Fourth of July, can they shoot them off in the street?
No. Unless it's in conjunction with the block party.
Huh. Okay. So, if the Fourth of July, it's illegal to shoot them off in the street, and if you have a block party, you can shoot them off in the street.
Right.
Okay.
I just wanted to bring your attention to one other thing that the, uh...
Yeah.
The PowerPoint, the PowerPoint's cut off a couple of words, and it's the consent of the neighborhood. And that is, this is really supposed to be a neighborhood party, and so it's going to require the consent of one adult from each residence affected by the block party, fronting onto the block party. So, i-if you want to have a block party, you have to get the consent of every, of at least one adult from any household that fronts onto the block party.
And you have to let them know there's fireworks?
Uh, no. I, I am sorry. What's the issue with the fireworks? Well, the fireworks would only happen on the Fourth of July weekend.
Thank you, that answered my question.
So, we're not allowing them to shoot off fireworks on the 20th of July. It's just that...
Am I reading this wrong? It says, unless, associated with a block party. So, is there somewhere down, did I miss something that says that it's only on the Fourth of July? Or is that another permit?
That's another ordinance.
I mean, another ordinance.
That's another ordinance that only allows it, I think it's the Third and the Fourth.
Here, Tim? Give us the final word here.
Uh, so it's against state law to use fireworks any other days in between the 28th and the Fourth. So, that identifies that. And the thought process behind allowing them to utilize the city street is if you have 20 homes that are involved in this block party, the intentions are the people get together and shoot their fireworks off together. And to require that to happen in somebody's driveway, I feel is a much bigger hazard to the community and the people than allowing them to do it in the street. Our current fireworks ordinance does not allow anything in the street unless it's blocked off. Because of the vehicle traffic hazard to the, the people.
Right. But it's only allowed during the time that it's legally, according to the ordinance, to shoot off the fireworks?
Yes.
Okay. You cannot have a block party, so my definition is you can't have a block party on New Year's Eve and shoot off fireworks?
No.
All right, okay. Because I was reading this. Mrs. Lewis, do you see what I was reading?
Yes, and that was my question, and, you know, just with my brain, it's always like, it's always good to see it written again, uh, in an ordinance. And, and I know that other ordinance cross over and they take, take precedence, uh, you know, with the Fourth of July, that you can only shoot off fireworks between this day and that day. But when I read this as well, I thought, okay, so that means that people can have fireworks as long as they get a permit from our city to shoot off fireworks. And to me, I took it as 12 months out of the year, not just for the Fourth of July season.
Yeah, I think the language actually does a pretty good job in saying, no, you can't ever do it unless the Fire Department approves it, and we're not going to approve it other than what the state of California allows you to do. Yeah.
Yeah, no, no, I, I, you're, you're exactly right. I, I get your point. Uh, I'm just saying that if, if, if I were the, the, a person coming and I read this thing, and I says, "What do you mean you can't approve? Where's the other ordinance?" And I say, "I don't know if, if would, uh, if you want to add a statement that says only fireworks, block party fireworks or any other fireworks can be..." I don't know.
Put the date specific?
Yeah, it, it, it's neither here nor there. I'm just trying to make sure it's clear to the public.
We could just add the words "and" and "and accordance with the fire code."
Okay. Excellent. Okay, let's get back to another discussion here. Anyone else?
No.
Okay. Stacy? The only complaint I ever get, and, and tell me if this is reasonable or not reasonable, I can go either way. The, the, the party is okay between the hours, not okay, between the hours of 10:00 and 8:00 AM, correct? Okay. So, if they had amplified music, that amplified music could go on till 10 o'clock, correct?
Yes.
Yeah. And that, and that's kind of, the calls that I get are, you know, about the amplified music. And, and I don't know if, if council, and council, I could go either way on this, but my, one, one of the things that was brought up to me is that, could you limit the music till 9:00 o'clock and let the party go on till 10:00 o'clock?
It, it's amplified, but it still has to meet the noise ordinance and the decibels specified within. So, it's still the same decibels at 9:00 that it is at 10:00?
No.
It drops off dramatically at 10:00. It's essentially no outdoor noise whatsoever. If you can hear it within, within your house, it's not a permit, it's not permitted with the noise ordinance.
I'm just thinking to wind down the party and, you know, that's a suggestion that was made to me. And, uh, and so I, I don't know if, uh, I'll put it out there, but, Mrs. Lewis?
I just had one question. Is it necessary, or is it in another ordinance, that we tell the public it's their responsibility to clean up the street if they're going to have this block party with fireworks?
It's within this ordinance that they must, it's actually...
Did I overlook it somewhere?
The permittee is responsible for cleanup immediately following the conclusion of the block party.
Yes, that's right, okay. I was thi... I'm thinking of food and stuff like that. I wasn't thinking of fireworks, okay.
Okay. Okay, uh, I guess there's no other comments. The only, the only, oh, Mrs. Stonegrove, you have a comment?
I was... No.
Okay. Oh, we have, yeah, we have to do that chat. Okay. Again, the only thing I'd want to bring up, and, and again, it's not a die-on-the-vine thing, if, if, if the music, uh, as a suggestion was made to me, be limited till, to 9:00 AM, 9:00 PM, and then the party ends at 10:00 and not change that? Yes?
Mr. Mayor, we can address that music issue. Generally, one of the conditions that we put on the special event permits or the block party permits is that the lawful orders, if you will, of a police officer have to be followed. So, if we respond to a call of loud music, there's always a state law that we can fall back on if it's a disturbance of the peace. But what we also do is generally add a condition, and I think that's been considered in this event or in this ordinance as well, as part of the application process, will be that you have to abide by the rules of the police officers that come visit you during the course of your event. And if they get a response, or they get a complaint of loud music, we'll go out and say, "You got to turn it down, your neighbors are complaining." A majority of the time, they always abide by that rule. But the condition is that if they do not abide by the rule, we shut the, the special event down right then and there. We revoke the permit, we open the street back up, and, uh, things go back to normal. So, that's another tool in the toolbox that we have when we go out to these things. We do that currently with a lot of the special events that we do. It's worked very well for us. It's a very easy condition that we put in, and at, till now, we have not had a lot of problems with it. Because it says right on there that we will revoke the, um, that your, your special event is, or your block party is subject to being revoked right then and there if you do not obey the officer's orders.
Okay. Well, I'll, I'll tell you what. With that statement, uh, I'll withdraw my request. And let you go.
We can still follow your request, uh, but I just wanted to provide you with that information.
Yeah.
Generally a condition that we provide with all of our permits.
So, so, um, so I, I guess what you're telling me, just to summarize that, that, that statement, is that, is that even if the music is loud at 9:00 o'clock, you're going to go out there and tell them to turn the music down?
Yes. Yes, if we get a complaint about it, absolutely.
Okay.
My kids go to bed at 8:00, and if it's loud, I'm going to call, and cops are going to do what they got to do.
Okay. Well, then, then let's leave it in your hands then. I'm good with that. Okay. Any other comments? Mrs. Stonegrove, do you still want to make a motion? Oh, God. I forgot that. Okay. Yeah, yeah, okay. All right, let's go on to, uh, public hearing. To receive public comment and consideration of adopting a proposed ordinance, uh, for, uh, let's see, the Los Angeles Municipal Code, Article 43, Chapter 3, Title 9, uh, of the Municipal Code relating to residential neighborhood block parties. Ordinance number 1136. Is there anyone who'd like to comment on that? All two of you?
Can I say something?
This is a public hearing.
But it doesn't relate to what you're...
You got to come, oh, no, no. You can't, you can't talk about anything else other than ordinance number 1136. No, you can't. Okay. Okay, that's okay. No problem. All right, so, not seeing or hearing anyone, I will now close the public hearing, bring it back to council level. We've had the staff report, public hearing. Now, Mrs. Stonegrove.
I move to waive the first reading of ordinance number 1136, adding Article 43, Chapter 3, to Title 9 of the Los Angeles Municipal Code relating to residential neighborhood block parties.
Mrs. Lewis?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, so a motion by Stonegrove, seconded by Lewis, to waive the first reading of ordinance number 1136. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? None carried. Okay, let's go on to the introduction. Mrs. Stonegrove?
Microphone.
I move to introduce ordinance number 1136, adding Article 43, Chapter 3, to Title 9 of the Los Angeles Municipal Code relating to the residential neighborhood block parties.
Mrs. Lewis?
Second the motion.
Okay, motion by Stonegrove, seconded by Lewis, uh, for the introduction of ordinance number 1136. And let's go to Director Maloney for a roll call.
Freya?
Yes.
Lewis? Silveira?
Yes.
Stonegrove?
Yes.
Walther?
Yes. Motion carried. Let's go on to Item F, Public Hearing, to receive public comment and consideration of adopting a proposed ordinance for regulation of zoning code appeals located in Title 9, Chapter 3 of the Los Angeles Municipal Code, ordinance number 1137, adopting revisions to the zoning code, standardizing the appeals process by amending Title 9, Chapter 3 of the Los Angeles Municipal Code. And this is a first reading and introduction, and we'll go to Senior Planner Elms.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and this is the last one. So, revisions to the zoning code, uh, and actually, just as this all came about, this was because of the special events ordinance, the block parties, all of those discussions at the Planning Commission, um, we were going through our appeals process and noticed that, um, there was a comprehensive zoning code update that was done on October 20th, uh, back in 2010, but it did not address a consistent uniform procedure for appeals, um, for whether those were decisions that were made by the Community and Economic Development Director or the Planning Commission. So, there were some articles that had separate or different appeals process and procedures, and they were all over the place in the zoning code. Some of the articles had an appeal process. If it was a staff decision, then it was appeal up to the city manager. Some appeals went to the Planning Commission, some went over that, went to, straight to the City Council. So, we wanted to create a standardized appeal process for the public to reduce confusion. That way, if you were looking at a particular article, um, you would know exactly how the appeal process went. So, the Planning Commission, um, did look at this item. They reviewed it on August 12, 2015, and they did recommend approval of the proposed ordinance to the City Council. Uh, the proposed ordinance proposes to provide a standardized appeals process throughout the zoning code. This is a part of our good housekeeping, as, as we see deficiencies in the code, we evaluate them and then bring them before you to, um, fix or change as we see necessary. And any dissatisfied person with the Community and Economic Development Director or the Planning Commission can file a written notice within 10 days of the decision. And this particular ordinance does define that. We have had situations, the way that some of, um, the articles are written specifically conditional use permits, site plan reviews, um, it's five business days, and it's not very clear in the code when that starts. Using Circle K, for instance, we had an appeal process during that, um, site plan review. It was, when do we start counting? Do we count business days? So, those were all discussions that we feel that this was necessary to clean up while we had the chance to do so. So, the Planning Commission would be the appellate body for the Community and Economic Development Director, and then the City Council would be the appellate body for the Planning Commission, and would be the final decision makers for that decision. So, the recommendation is that, uh, the City Council waive the first reading and introduce ordinance number 1137, adopting revision to the zoning code, standardizing the appeals process. And that concludes my presentation. So, I don't know if I was very clear, but this particular ordinance, what it's doing, it's pointing to one section of the zoning code instead of every article having its own appeal process. It'll, each article will point to one section of the code, which will specifically say it's a 10-day process. The, um, process starts the day after the decision. Um, if it falls on a weekend or a holiday, it would be the business day after. So, it's very clear within the ordinance how this appeal process would take place.
Okay. Are there any comments from council? Any comments from council? All right, let's open the public hearing. To receive public comment and consideration in adopting a proposed ordinance for regulation of zoning code appeals located in Title 9 of Chapter 3 of the Los Angeles Municipal Code. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on ordinance number 1137?
Can I talk?
No.
You, you may speak only on ordinance number 1137. Okay. Not seeing or hearing anyone. Last call. To, uh, I will now close the public hearing and bring it back to council level. And Mrs. Lewis?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to, if there are no comments, uh, from any council members, I'd like to make a motion to waive the first reading of ordinance number 1137.
Do I have a second? Mr. Silveira?
I'll second.
It's been motioned by Lewis, seconded by Silveira, to waive the first reading of ordinance number 1137. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? None carried. Mrs. Lewis?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to introduce, uh, ordinance number 1137 as read by title.
Mr. Silveira?
I'll second.
Okay. Motioned by Lewis, seconded by Silveira to intro, for the introduction of ordinance number 1137. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? None carried. Okay, we've continued Item 9, advisement of public notices, one report. Assistant Planner Elms?
So...
Oh, Senior Planner Elms.
Mr. Mayor? What are we supposed to do?
Oh, Jesus, I, I'm sorry. Let's go to, uh, back to ordinance number, uh, 1137, and Lucy, roll call vote?
Freya?
Yes.
Lewis? Silveira?
Yes.
Stonegrove?
Yes.
Walther?
Yes. Motion carried. Okay, let's go to Item Number 10, Senior Planner Elms, advisement of public notices, and tonight we have one report.
The, uh, public hearing advisements for mobile vendor permit number 2015-01 for Tacos El Jefe. This would be located at 1155 I Street, and, um, the Planning Commission will be... This would be located at 1155 I Street, and the Planning Commission will be reviewing this item on Wednesday, September 9, 2015, at 7:00 p.m.
Okay. All right, let's go on to item number 11, city managers' report.
Just one item. Pick up your t-shirts at Forest Station Number One, $15, buy one for a friend. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, tonight, let's go to city council member reports. Tonight, we'll start with Mr. Correa.
Thank you. We got reminder, Knights of Columbus, my brother Knights, Saturday, September 12, Olivera Park Soccer Day Event, 11:30 to 1:00. And that's going to be a busy day in Los Banas, because we also got the movie night that night. And then, September 26th, Eric Lamone reminded us tonight, the Republic is doing a manual cleanup from 7:00 to 2:00. Veterans Day Parade is going to be November 7th, and at 11:00 in the morning. It seems like a long way off, but it's not, so get your entrances in. Had a beautiful parade last year, we hope to have another one this year. Domestic violence, once again, Valley Crisis Center, Domestic Violence Month, October 16th, Jacob Park, 6 o'clock, with a march. Want to remind everyone, too, the arts, Los Banas Arts Council is very active, they work very hard in Los Banas to bring music to town, art, entertainment, all kinds of things. They also do a lot to support arts activities in the town and arts groups. Some things they have going on right now, September 17th, there's going to be a drawing class, it's called the Fundamentals, and it's $20 per person at the Ted Velasco Arts Center. And you can reach, you can sign up for that, Linda Ladue Brown, and, or you can contact the Arts Council. And then September 12th, actually, 9:30 to 4:30, they're going to have Pumpkin Patch of Quilts Show, and that's $7 admission. And there's also going to be a Hometown Heroes presentation on Saturday, quilt and basket raffles, quilter's cafe, fresh pumpkins, vendor mall, and free parking, so they're going to have a nice fall show there. And the Arts Councils also have the Hook Slide. Hook Slide is a musical organization coming in, it's the first of their five concerts. You can buy a concert ticket, season ticket, for $80, or the concerts run $15 to $20 per concert. And that concert's going to be September 19th, 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. Vocal percussion and bass, it's a very good, excellent, excellent vocal group. So I hope everybody can make it out to all this fun stuff.
All right, thank you. Let's go on to... Mrs. Lewis?
Yes, I have nothing to report tonight, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Let's go on to Mr. Solera.
I just got one thing and then one comment I'd like to make. This Saturday, or no, excuse me, not this Saturday, September the 11th, it will be the Casa event, the West Side Casa event at the Fairgrounds. If you're interested in tickets, you can email me at scott.solera@losbanas.org, and I will put you in touch with someone that's selling those tickets. Also, just wanted to give a, a little bit, show a little bit of appreciation for staff. I'm really happy that as we're going through and as these items are coming up, that we are taking the time to revisit our ordinances and clean up language in there and make things more streamlined. I know that's kind of been something that, I'm happy that the city is taking that direction over the last few years, that once we get into these ordinances, it's time to vet them out and get them all cleaned up. So I think you guys are doing a really great job on that. And that's all I have for tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Mrs. Stonegrove.
Thank you. Looking forward to the event on the 12th, hosted by the fire department and the other agencies, and the movie night, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Okay, and just to recap a little bit about Marco Boffa, thank you so much for your service to our community, and for James Savage, for the, the kind of notoriety he brought to our town with his swim from Alcatraz to, to the shore. So first in, in his division, so we're going to see and hear a lot more about that young man, so congratulations. And just remember, it takes good parents, too, and they support him because that's a, that's an activity that requires a lot of parental involvement for students to be able to attend those events. And, and my hat goes off to the parents, and thank you so much for providing for your children that way. The, the last thing I want to mention is, you know, with all the, the negativity you hear about law enforcement, I'm just going to tell you, our, our department, public safety, fire, and police are shining stars. They will never get enough praise, and yet they should. They help to keep this town safe. They take care of our citizens. And yet, every place you look, you hear just kind of negative connotations about law enforcement. And it is time that we all join together and praise these men and women for the job that they do. Over the past months, they have helped to keep our town drug-free. And I can tell you, without telling you, that they will continue to do this with a vengeance. And I mean a vengeance. Their participation has helped to curb a lot of illegal activity. But if you're a victim of some of this illegal activity, it's never enough protection. That's why I'm asking that you continue to form Neighborhood Watch. I've mentioned this more than once. Neighborhood Watch is the best protection that you have in this community. It's called boots on the ground, more eyes, and you call the police, and they are just going to be so happy that, that you're taking an interest. We ask for volunteers, those volunteers will be able to, to, to help curb the cost of these events when they're trained by our police and fire department. And when we have people watching out for our community, it helps us to curb this illegal activity. So call the PD, they will send out an officer to your home, arrange a block party, and get people interested in working with your neighborhoods. I can't stress to you enough, we, we approved an ordinance for block parties, for people to get together. We'll have a Neighborhood Watch block party. I'm telling you, that's the best defense against people that are up to no good. Our chief and departments will bend over backwards to do anything for you to help you organize these groups. Think about volunteering, think about vital, and think about volunteering in your own So it's getting late, and thank you for staying with us, all two of you, and the people out in, in, on the airwaves. But again, we will be continuing some of these items, and some of the items that were mentioned tonight, a fee schedule will be brought back, and you'll have an opportunity to comment. So with that, I'm going to adjourn the meeting at 10:33.